Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. At this point, I'd like to turn the mic over to Dr. Harrison for his update.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone here tonight. We are going to make our best effort to project because we are having microphone issues tonight, and we should have this resolved by our next meeting. So, as all of us up here, we can make an effort to project, not only so our audience hears this, but it can be picked up adequately on the camera. I have a few things to report tonight. Certainly, you're going to hear a lot of speaking from me as we have a number of presentations that we're going to tackle. That will begin, one, with calendar and focusing on some of the discussion, the obstacles that we have with the calendar for next year and recommendations that we will put forth. And we'll also talk about budget and moving forward to the next level, which certainly I think a lot of folks know, but on March 15th, we'll be presenting the superintendent's budget proposal. But with that said, a few things I would like to touch on first. Snow days. Yes, winter is here, and we are feeling winter, I think, in the last week or two of weeks we haven't in a number of years. And just be mindful of the fact that we do have one more snow day afforded us because of the alteration to our calendar. And with that said, sticking on that theme of school closures, if you recall, next week was a been a week-long vacation. But because of the modification, because of the days that we use in connection with the hurricane, school will only be closed on Monday and Tuesday, but we will be in session Wednesday through Thursday. There will be communications coming out to parents from their children's respective schools this week to address the type of instruction and accommodations for students that may be absent. While we do have that communication coming forward, know that we do anticipate relatively strong attendance in each of our schools and instruction certainly will be curriculum-based and meaningful.
Chris, can you just explain, when you say "one more snow day afforded," obviously, Friday was the snow day, but how are we going to be handling that? Is that, we have one more day left?
We have one more day left. When we modified the calendar, we provided ourselves with two additional days. So Friday, we utilized one of them, which means we have one in the bag. Thanks. We're in the midst of the high school principal searches, we discussed last time, and Dr. Cor and I have been interviewing a number of very strong candidates, and we're preparing to bring a slate forward to the community-based representative committee in the near future. But I do want to give a plug for the Main Street School principal search, that there'll be a public forum held on Thursday, February 28, 7:30 PM, at Main Street School. We certainly want to encourage everyone in the community to come out and all that should have a vested interest in the next leader for Main Street School. We use the terminology "leadership profile," and simply stated, maybe that sounds a little jargony to some, we want to know what you think, is the bottom line. We want to hear your thoughts on the types of skills, the type of person that you want to lead your school. So if you have thoughts and opinion on that matter, which I think all of you should, please come out on the 28th, come out and let us know what you think. Help inform our thinking as we begin to screen candidates. Certainly, your contribution will be very important, and we value that. I also want to add that next Thursday, the PTSA is sponsoring a budget discussion at 7:00 PM, Dowslane, the multipurpose room. It'll be a relatively informal discussion, talk about priorities to help inform administrations' thinking, because we anticipate after tonight's discussion on the budget moving forward, we're going to have a lot of hard decisions to make. We're interested in hearing your priorities and concerns that you have moving forward as it relates to the budget and the obvious correlation with your children's experiences, the types of programs that we provide, maintenance of our facilities, and so on. So another opportunity, we hope that you come out and join us for, let me say, will be a rather informal conversation, I certainly anticipate giving a bit of an overview, similar to probably some of the things that you'll see in here tonight. But then I want, but really, what I want is to hear your thinking. I want the floor to be open to you to share your thoughts. So please consider joining us again, it's next Thursday, the 21st, 7:00 PM, Dowslane, multipurpose room. Now, we have some exciting athletic needs to report. Our boys' basketball team will host the Class B sectional outer bracket game versus Artsley tomorrow at 4:30. The adversity girls' basketball team will host Bronsville in the first round of sectionals Friday at 4:15. I also want to note that each of those games, there is admission fee of $3, so make sure you bring your money. Also, our winter track team is competing in the sectionals tomorrow with the Armory in the city. The meet begins at 4:30, so if anybody's up for a trip and adventure into the city on what should be a beautiful day, please go out and support our team. And the hockey team has their final regular season game against Pelham tomorrow at the Ice Hutch at 5:45. I do want to send congratulations to the wrestling team for its fifth-place finish in the Division Two meet this weekend, which we did host here despite the snow and things where we scheduled and bumped around, but we were able to get it off and have a wonderful meet. We had six wrestlers that finished in the top six of their respective weight classes. Justin Jimenez, Peter Jones, Adam Krieger, each placed third. Anthony DiNardo finished fourth, and Zach Silverheart came in fifth. Certainly want to congratulate Brett Pastore for winning the sectional championship for the second consecutive year. Brett won the 152-pound division title on Sunday and will compete in the state championship on the 22nd, 23rd in Albany. More congratulations going to high school students. We're proud to report that two high school students have been named as National Merit finalists, Monica Triscoll and Sayash Bhatt. Program honors students who have exceptional academic ability and potential to success. More than half of the finalists will win a National Merit scholarship and will earn and carry with them the coveted title of National Scholar Merit. We're certainly proud of their accomplishments and wish them luck as they continue in that process. Next order of business, we wanted to ask Tanya to step forward. Tanya Hunt, the PTSA president, is going to give us a little overview of some of the goings-on of the PTSA, much like last week where we invited the Education Foundation to come and share a lot of the good work that they're doing for our schools and for our children. We've asked Tanya to come in, let the PTSA brag a little bit, so Tanya.
Before you start, I question the email that you said is going to be forthcoming regarding the steps the teachers will be taking to ensure that the kids get taught next weekend, even if they're not here. What is that email coming out?
That'll come out from principals.
This is the Friday.
Friday, that's what's true.
Sorry.
I came up here because if the microphones aren't working, there's no microphone to stand at back there, so I thought it might be just as well to come up here so everybody could see and hopefully hear. I'll try to speak up as well, follow that direction. So, you know, first of all, I'd just like to say that the PTSA as a whole, we're very proud to be advocates for our children and partners in funding programs for our children in all four of our schools. It's really a privilege for us to be able to do that. Dr. Harrison already mentioned our forthcoming PTSA coffee and conversation where he's going to be joining us on Thursday, the 21st, so do definitely come out for that if you're around. We also have, we're working in partnership with the district and Dr. Harrison to reach out to preschool parents on March 18th. That's coming up relatively quickly, and, you know, I think it's important for us to reach out to those parents who have children coming into our district as well. And so at Good Shepherd Nursery School on March 18th, we're going to reach out to those parents, and we're inviting parents from nursery schools all around, you know, in Irvington and around the Irvington School District, you know, schools where we know Irvington kids are going to preschool. So that's another opportunity that we're working on with the district and Dr. Harrison. We also were able to select two PTSA representatives for each of the search committees for the principals, both at Main Street School and the high school, and we were really glad to be able to do that and have the privilege to be able to do that. We have an executive board member from, on each committee, and also a PTSA member at large. So I think combined with the representatives that the IEF chose as well for each of those committees, we're going to have a really nice parent representation on those committees at those interviews. Seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents worth of grants for all four of our schools. I just picked out some of the examples that I think are nice to highlight. One that's, a new one coming up at Dowslane is the Mad Month of Science Grant. We're looking forward to that program coming up, like I said, in March. We were able to buy some more books for the Dowslane library. We funded Colonial Day Musician at Main Street School and the DARE program for the fifth graders, a Civil War artifacts exhibit at the middle school, as well as the middle school talent show, and at the high school trophy cases, and a special education program class field trip to the Guggenheim Museum, the Maritime Aquarium, and the Palisades Mall. So that's just, those are just some of the things that we've been able to do this year that we're really excited about. The next item I wanted to share with you all, we had a discussion at our executive board meeting this morning about exploring forming a River Town's PTA council. And basically, what that means is that we would be actively and more formally working with PTAs in our surrounding communities to talk to each other on a more consistent basis about what each of us is doing in our districts and sharing resources and working together to provide parent education and those kinds of things. So I think that's an exciting initiative that we're working on as well. We are trying to reschedule the Wizards, which we unfortunately had to cancel the Harlem Wizards game on Friday, of course, because of the storm. If we are not able to do that, just stay tuned either for a scheduled, a rescheduled date, or an announcement about either how to donate your money to the PTSA or receive a refund for your ticket, whichever you prefer. And the last item is, this is our biggest fundraiser of the year and one that we really, you know, it's a fantastic event for those of you who've been to it before. We have our PTSA Spring Luncheon in May, it's Friday, May 3rd this year, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at our usual location, Abigail Persia Tappan Hill. So please look for the invitation and make an effort, if you can, to come, and of course, if you can't come, we're always happy to receive a donation. And I just want to say, our, my chairs this year have asked me to personally reach out to the board and the administrators and, you know, all the principals and everybody and issue you a special invitation to come to the PTSA Spring Luncheon. I know many of you have been before, but we really love seeing you there. We know somebody has to stay at the schools to keep things running that day, but as many of you can come, we hope that we can join us. And I think that's it. Thank you.
So, thank you, Tanya, and thank you for all the great work that you and the PTSA have done this year, and we look forward to a continued excellent productive partnership. I am already thinking about how we're going to, who's going to get the short straw for the day of the luncheon, who's going to stay behind to make sure our schools are well en route on that afternoon, but certainly looking forward to it, but thank you, Tanya.
If anyone has any comments on anything on the agenda, we'll take those now with the caveat that it's a thin agenda, and the two presentations regarding the budget and the calendar, we'll take public comment after each of those presentations. Okay. Does anyone want to discuss anything on the very thin consent agenda before we... Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. At this point, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Harrison for a riveting school-year calendar presentation. I always wondered after this presentation how many tickets, airline tickets, from Irvington for the February break.
Well, I have to say, embedded into all the dialogue, embedded into all the dialogue about the revisions that we made to our calendar this year, were a number of comments tied to people making plans for next year because of family opportunities and so on. I have to say that, you know, when you move into any new job, there's always areas where there's a learning curve, and calendar was not one that I expected.
Twelve months.
The calendar is different in New York than it is New Jersey, and...
Oh, it's leaking.
Is that what it is? But with that said, we have... There's certainly obstacles here when we looked, when we look to build a calendar. Things that are traditional, school district to school district, anywhere you go across the country, challenges that you face. But New York has an interesting twist here, and it's one of the few places that I know really has some of these factors that really drive how we schedule the calendar. And the New York calendar has posed a lot of problems for us. But as we headed into the calendar development for this year, you know, we certainly want to focus on a couple of driving forces here. We wanted to look at what we could do to maximize student learning, to try to provide as much continuity to instruction where we can. We needed to meet the SED requirements that are referenced. Obviously, there's a 180-day requirement. There's also a testing calendar that drives much of what we have to do. We have to align our calendar with contractual obligations, we have to be considerate of various holidays, and of course, we try to be consistent with surrounding districts and BOCs, because there's tremendous shared services and integration of programs that we try to be mindful of. So with that said, we also sought out opportunities to enhance what we had this year to try to tackle some of the issues that we had, moving some of the conference days around so we could have access to teachers at different times of the year to better align with what our instructional needs are. One thing that became abundantly clear, we needed a better plan to deal with emergency closings or snow days. We also want to continue our focus on addressing some of the concerns that have been presented regarding early release dates, looking at how we did it in the last week of school. We also look to address one mid-year early release day. I have to say, the first bullet under the early release dates, we're still wrestling with that a little bit, and there's challenges there. Some folks could sit back and say, well, that whole last week of school, if it's just a half-day, well, maybe we begin to wrap up instruction earlier, and what are we doing on those other half-days? In the past, maybe there was more validity to those challenges, but now because of APPR, there's a lot of work that has to be done. If you think of the pre-assessments your children were involved in with the slows, the student learning outcomes, or objectives that we have for our students, there's a tremendous amount of assessment at the end of the year. So when you think of teachers that have to grade traditional final exams, now we have to grade those assessments that are aligned for the teacher's goals that they get scored on, that teachers get rating on, and of course, we're measuring student progress, so there's important data that comes out of that. The one real hitch with all this is that, in many cases, teachers can't grade their own students' work, so you have to have other teachers grading. And so to think that a teacher's going to give a test and be able to go sit down at home at night and spend a couple nights doing a thorough job reviewing a student's test is no more, because we need teachers grading papers together, that I need to grade someone else's papers, and someone else is going to grade my own. There's also situations that are before us where we're going to have to have teachers, possibly between school districts, grading papers, because you could have situations where you have an isolated program, a program where you only have one person that teaches a certain singleton-type course, where there's a specialized certification. So we're going to have to look at creative ways to assess those students' final products in those cases. So when we look at the half-days at the end of the year this year, there is a meaningful reason why we need that time and teachers need to be in school together. So we're continuing to evaluate that, and we'll look to integrate that moving forward. But the focus of tonight is to look at where we can go and look at the challenges that we have before us in structuring, what the overall calendar looks like. And in this process, we developed a series of calendars, and they've gone through a number of revisions. And this first draft was an option, an option that I'll tell you upfront, something that we moved away from in our dialogue, but I want to demonstrate the different things that we looked at as we were developing this calendar. There was initially conversation among all the superintendents in the region. BOCs put out what they thought they were going to do, and of course, then all the other districts tried to model what they're doing around that and accommodating some unique needs that exist in each community. So when we look at the challenges that we have before us, we see where Labor Day falls on the 2nd, and then we see Rosh Hashanah on the 5th and the 6th. So we begin to think about when we bring staff in, we think about when we bring kids in, to think about when we're going to have access, the teachers to provide the professional development that we need, to launch the school year, for them to have the time that they need in their classroom to get ready for the school year. But we also think about students, and we're thinking about students coming in and orienting themselves in a new grade level, a new environment, a new teacher, and what those impacts would be if they came in for a couple of days versus coming in and having a full week. An immediate concern that jumps out here to us is looking at the late start date for children, September 9th, which is so late in the game to get our kids going. If we're thinking about assessments, if we're thinking about how we want our students to perform on any standardized assessment, if we're thinking about our students that are taking AP exams, those two extra days of starting earlier, if we could bring kids on the 3rd and 4th, could be beneficial. So we looked at the different scenarios. This scenario, what it was demonstrating is what it would look like if we brought staff in on the 3rd and the 4th, obviously being closed for the holidays on the 5th and the 6th, and the students starting on the 9th. And then as we move forward, you can see how other things fall out in October, looking at a superintendent's conference day on the 4th, the 14th being closed for Columbus Day, Veterans Day, November, traditional Thanksgiving recess, and then looking at the holiday recess in December into January. Herein, we made one change with respect to an early release day. Because of the Christmas holiday falling on a Wednesday, didn't think it was necessary to have that half-day on the Friday beforehand. I think if folks are traveling for the holidays, that we've allotted you enough time that you can leave Friday night or Saturday. So we make, I think we preserve some instructional time there and maintain focus. January, looking at the 20th, Martin Luther King Day, February recess that we've enjoyed here in the community for many years. In March, looking at a conference day. April, we have spring break, we're able to envelop the holidays, but we've added the 21st, which I'll come back to in a second. Looking at in May, we have Memorial Day on the 26th, but we've added the 23rd, which again, I will come back to. And then we look, and we come down to the end of the year, the 26th being the last official day of school, the last day for students, and that 26th is a magical day. It's a magical day because it's a day that dictates that we have to run school in New York up until that day. So in many ways, it causes us to look at stretching out the calendar.
Why is that? Because when I was looking at this...
It's tied to the region's calendar, and it's what's referred to as Brady Day. And based upon New York Commissioner Reich's, we're supposed to be in school up through that day. So with that said, and there was speculation originally that that day was actually going to fall on the 20th, which would have posed some challenges in another direction in compressing the calendar. So here comes the challenges that...
So the 26th next year is unusually late.
Unusually late, just...
That's what we're discussing.
Yes, it is unusually late. As I said, there was speculation that it was going to be on the 20th at one point, and it was just about two and a half weeks ago SED released the date of the 26th. So with that said, we start to run into some challenges. And in looking at how we wanted to lay out, map out our school year, looking at the contractual obligations that I referenced before, generally speaking, we look at a situation where we have teachers that have an obligation for 186 days. So we start to figure out how we make those 186 days fit within this equation, and that's where we came in with the opportunity to add that Monday, the 21st, which this...
About month, April.
21st of April, sorry, and then the 23rd of May. And I have to say, when we looked at the, making it a longer weekend in May, there were challenges there, well, are you going to do a Friday or are you going to do a Tuesday? And Dr. Mosenthal presented a compelling argument that often, that is when the track sectionals are held, and we have a large number of students in our schools that are not in the high school because they're off at the track meet. We also have heard stories and have had observations where with the long weekend, that families may travel on a Friday for the long weekend. So we shifted the day to the Friday rather than the Tuesday to be considered for those two reasons.
The 21st still seems a little random to me. Why wouldn't we say that we're going to have 186 total student days and 188 staff days and have six snow days? Why sort of have a random Monday off and put a long weekend? Why wouldn't we just add another day?
Come back to the point where we have precedent established with bargaining units to 186-day work here. And then you'd be left with the complexity, you did not utilize all the days, you'd be in a position where we would be then giving random days off, and I think finding some of the challenges that we saw with modifying our calendar this year, putting folks in difficult spots with childcare and so on, and not just talking about folks in our community, we also have to think about our employees who have school-aged children that would need childcare, that those days off, random days off, may not align with their home school district where their children attend. So this was one model, and one thing that you're going to see consistent, that there's notation down at the very bottom with respect to looking at how we would handle snow days. Certainly, when we look at the calendar, we have the requirement of 180 student days. That 180 student days can include four superintendent conference days. So realistically, the state minimum would be they could have 176 traditional instructional days, and you could use four superintendent conference days that could add together to sum the 180 that's necessary. So when we look at this model, you see clearly that if we look at 181 student days, four superintendent conference days, you can see that we have five built-in snow days in this model, our emergency closure days. We've also identified that if we exceeded those five days, we would go and look at the following days that are listed on the bottom as makeup days if necessary, and it would be March 14th, the 21st of April, and then the Friday before Memorial Day, the 23rd of May. So we've given, identified a strategy to handle up to eight emergency closing days in this model, and you'll see there'll be a consistency that follows through with each of the others. So this next model, there's really only a couple minor, minor differences. You'll see that if we're looking at the start and the beginning of the year, that we're looking at, again, students starting on the 9th, 8th, 3rd, and 4th. But the major, major difference we look at is two weeks for the December-January holiday recess. It may seem like a long time, but there's some consideration for instruction here. Looking at two days left in that week, I'm concerned about what attendance would look like, also concerned about bringing kids in for two days after that long time off and getting them wound right back up to only go home for another weekend. But I have to tell you that when we look at all of our surrounding districts, districts that we share services with, districts that we try to align calendars with, and BOCs, all of those districts are in position to move forward to recommend a two-week vacation December and January. So that decision would be consistent with all, most of our surrounding districts, including BOCs. So as we look, move forward, much of the calendar looks the same until you hit April. We pick up that 21st, we need at that point to make up an instructional day, still the same opportunity for a long weekend in May, and looking at the end of the year, the 26th, this provides us with 180 student days, four superintendent conference days. So again, we're in a situation, four built-in snow days, and then we could utilize March 14th as a makeup day and May 23rd, then building in potentially six snow days, emergency closing days. Option number three is a slight variation on the last model. Option number three, the primary difference that you see...
Just so I can compartmentalize it and paraphrase what you said. The main difference between two and one is that in two, we get the two full weeks off for the Christmas-New Year's break. And we lose the benefit of two built-in snow days.
Yes, and you lose the day off on the twenty-first of April, spring break. So option three, and I'll tell you, this is my preferred model. We're looking at starting staff in August. Bring staff in for two days, for two superintendent conference days on the 28th and 29th of August, and having our students start on the third and the fourth. Herein, remember my remarks from a few minutes ago when I highlighted the idea of looking at claiming two additional instructional days before assessments later in the year will have value. I can tell you the idea of bringing students in and having them transition into their new routines, new classrooms, new environment, getting used to the new teacher within that period of time, and then going off, would be great to be able to come back in on that Monday and hit the ground running. When we look at the calendar moving forward, it's consistent with the last model, the two weeks in December. Here, we have the situation again where we have light version one. We have the twenty-first off in April, and the long weekend beginning on Friday in May. We back to 181 student days, four superintendent conference days. There are four or five built-in emergency closure days. And then we identify once again, March 14th, twenty-first of April, May 23rd, to again, give us that possibility in a plan to be able to manage eight emergency closings. So with that said, there's opportunity for discussion. Historically, where there aren't statutory or regulatory requirements for us to have all formal hearings, that I understand the tradition in Irvington has been to allow this to sit for a period of time. So we believe that we would take it up at the second meeting in March for approval at that point in time. But we certainly want to open the floor to questions.
I'll take questions from the board first, and then I'll look up to the community. Does anybody have any questions?
The scheduling of the superintendent conference days, is there some kind of rival reason for that? And with that said, I look at the Fourth of October and wonder why it wouldn't be on the 11th, thus creating another full week of lessons and then having one, you know, four-day weekend for the families. Why do we break up two weeks? And I have to tell you this, I like any of these because they have big blocks of time, weeks on end where the kids are going to school, and there aren't these crazy days off that wreck the academic momentum that I've seen as our kids have grown up in Irvington. So I like what you're doing. I'm just wondering, why can't we, why do we need to have it October 4th? That's my first question.
My initial response, Jim, is going to be that when we think of all the work that's involved with APPR, the development of the pre-assessments, the establishment and creation of slows, that extra week, and when we talked about it around the table with our administrative council in this very room, we played around with that day. To us, there was value in having it sooner than later because needing access to teachers to develop grade assessments, to be able to establish slows moving forward. Establish the teachers to be focused a week sooner, I think will have tremendous benefit instructional. We only have 180 days, so one week is important.
It's an American Express, doesn't care about a week.
Well, I just, I was agreeing with Jim that the herky-jerky calendar of the past was very frustrating. And if we can make it more continuous, that would be better. I guess I would just request that you consider to weigh the pro and con side.
November 4th to the October 11th.
October 11th. The only thing I would add, and again, from a historical perspective, there was a time when we did get feedback about these long weekends. And for some people, they loved the long weekend. And for some parents, they felt if they weren't going away, that was two days in a row that they needed to make alternate plans. So I would just share that as perspective that was given to us in the past when we were backing up, thinking people liked it that way. So I'll make a note of it.
Maria Robbins?
I like it. I mean, I like the idea of sort of bringing kids back two days after Christmas break and then giving them a weekend, just giving them the two weeks. I actually think that just makes a lot of sense. You know, same thing. I mean, look at this year with all the weather and snow days and how many whole week of schools we have this year. It's crazy. So hopefully, I guess, you know, things that are working out better.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Nobody liked the place we were, the situation we were put in. We had to take away from either the March break or the February break. Somebody was getting, it was a hardship to people regardless of what we did. And I like the fact that you're proposing a schedule that has eight days built in and three of which you wouldn't have to go and change any of the vacation time. Could you just go over the September, third and fourth again? I mean, I've always thought those first couple of days, you organize your pencils, and leave early, and you get your homework, and it's another day off.
I don't think, I'd be surprised to hear me disagree with that. But at the same time, you know, let's come back to the value of that instructional time before we begin to assess our children. And if we are going to hypothetically spend time organizing pencils, let's spend that time doing it sooner than later. I think the idea of coming in and starting our students at the earliest time possible, I believe we're going to see most of our families back in town by that point in time. People are ready to get going with the school year. I think it's a great opportunity to bring children in, get them oriented with their environment, and then have a solid week without disruption, picking off instruction on the ninth. I think just instructionally, it's a much more sound model. And I have to say, say that recognizing at the same time that staff and everybody, we're bringing back, and we're disrupting people's summers earlier. And I have to say, when we talk to all of our bargaining units about this, everybody liked that model from the benefit that it would have for your children.
I have a question. I too like option number three the best, specifically for those two days in September. You have those housekeeping things, you know, you have to get everything, anxiety because and everything, and then hit the ground running that following Monday. I like that. But I don't understand, you say that there are eight built-in snow days. How is that possible?
So if we go down to the little key on the bottom right-hand corner, we have 181 student days in the calendar. We have four superintendent conference days. SED regulations dictate we have 180 student days. So that which can include four superintendent conference days. So we have a total there of 185. So there's five snow days. And then if you go to the very bottom, we have contingency days that identify an additional three days that where we certainly would prefer not to do that. But if we exceeded our five, it's not going to be a surprise to our community when we have to go and modify calendar. Now, someone may ask, well, what would be your strategy in going through and identifying which of those days you would use? I think that would be a judgment call based upon recommendation to administration, considering whatever our situation has been at that point in time. It's possible that we'll be past March 14th before we would have days 16. But if we had a number of days early on, we might want to think that it might be wise to consider the 14th. We're going to have to play weatherman next year if that were to be the case. But historically, we average, if you remember back to my presentation when we modified the calendar, you know, we averaged a little over three snow days a year here historically. So, you know, we'd have to have quite a winter or another major, major problem to exceed that five. And if we do, we know the direction we're going.
I'd just like to thank you for being so thorough, you know, in looking at these three options. I also like option number three. And I guess just for clarity, this option assumes that we're going to have partial days, early release days in that last week of June, right? How many do we have?
At this point, I would say make the assumption of four, but we're still trying. You know, the real challenge here is that we're going through all the logistics of APPR for the first time. We could be totally overwhelmed year one, and year two, be much more comfortable with what our needs are.
So my only request representing the needs of our constituents in Irvington, Terrytown, is to try your very best to reduce those, because I know it drives people absolutely batty to have the partial days.
Yeah, it's funny, because one last thing, I would say, I want to say mine, but it's a little bit different. I actually always agree with that, except because it's so late, a lot of kids are going to be gone, and sleep away already.
That's right.
So this year, Mike and the anomaly and that people might actually have days. I mean, there's a large, you know, the younger kids go to sleep away, and most camps are well underway by the 26th of June. So, you know, I was going to say, I-
You know, it's funny because I was thinking the same thing, but the camps are probably going to adjust now since it applies to all the New York schools.
No, they haven't adjusted for New York. They have their calendars and their, yeah, so I completely, in general, I agree completely. But I was going to say, this year, I actually think a few early release days might work in everyone's favor.
No, and I have to say, we did have that conversation because that's always a concern and the things that principals begin hearing about as people are looking to make those plans and deposits for camp down the road. But what needs to be consideration there as well, especially when we're that late in the year, is the heat and on-air conditions schools. The, you know, the probability that it's going to be extraordinarily warm and be uncomfortable for our students and staff is something that should be in the back of our mind a little bit. Especially considering how late in the year it is. If we were a week or two earlier, you know, maybe you wouldn't have that way, and I mean the same way. But I have to be honest, that is a concern for me.
Does anyone in the community have any questions, concerns, comments? We're going to vote on this at the next meeting?
No, the two weeks from now would be the 19th, I think it is.
Okay, so if anybody does have anything, or if your neighbors have anything they want to say, they can email us or speak directly with Dr. Harrison. If they have any questions now, we're happy to answer them.
Would it be inappropriate to post a tentative calendar?
Draft number three.
The presentation will be on-
Yeah, the presentation will be posted, and we can make notation that the recommendation at this point in time would be to approve-
It's a good idea.
Version three.
No one? Okay. Do I get a glass of water or something? That's what everybody's here for. Feature presentation.
Okay, so tonight, where tonight is one of those situations where maybe administration sits back and after a brief presentation, gets to take a backseat, this is a point where we begin to pivot. We've been, over the past two months, essentially building a picture of what our needs are. Going back in December, this is going to sound like it's redundant to many of you, but I think it's important to remind us of the scope of the work that we've achieved at this point. And to look at what we accomplished in December. We made very, very premature, early projections as to what a maintenance budget would look like. The idea of taking our programs and services we have today and moving them forward, projecting what those costs and related implications would be. From then, in January, we jumped into looking at the business side of our operation and beginning to project what our wants and needs were. We then, in January 22nd, we looked at athletics, special ed, pupil personnel services, and did the same thing. And then the last meeting, last week, was a very long presentation and got into the meat of the large majority of our budget. And that is where human resources are tied, looking at our instructional staff, looking at our programs. And then Beverly did and completed an analysis of our benefits and revenue projections for this year. So in doing so, we wanted to address a couple of questions that sat out there before we moved into talking about the next steps in our budget process. And we had a couple of points that came up that we wanted to provide some direction and answer to. So the first, like Dr. Fort, to speak to if you could?
Sure. So you had asked specifically about the Edith Winter Teacher Center. And that was a membership that we rejoined this year after several years of not being members. The cost that you'll see in the next year's budget is the $17,000. It was a similar cost this year. So I just gave you the examples of the way that that money was used this year, and I would expect that it would be used similarly next year. So this year, the Teachers' Center provided in-district professional development for our APPR. And that was 22 teachers and principals participated in four professional development days, or will by the end of the year. And it was the way that we are turnkeying our training system. So these 22 people were trained, and then they would go back to their buildings and turnkey that back to all faculty. So all faculty actually benefited from that. The second way that we're using our funding from Edith Winthrop this year is on our elementary mathematics. So we have approximately 55 teachers who are working this year to align and develop common core units of study. The one piece that we did not use this year to date, and again, it's only February, so it's literally a happy year, is we have not had any teachers take advantage of the courses that are offered by the Teachers' Center. And I would just say that, you know, that's something that you build over time. And because we have not been part of that Teachers' Center for several years now, I think we need to do, make more concerted effort to provide teachers with the information. They do do a newsletter every month that we send to teachers. But we would hope that over time, teachers would be taking advantage of this service. But at this point, we, it's equal in that that's what we expended, and that was also what we got back in terms of professional development.
We have 55 men teachers in our school district.
These are elementary teachers, they all teach math.
So we look at this as a situation essentially where it was costing a drivel, right? So the investment will return, and you think about for $17,000 in the number of professional development contacts that are embedded in that. If we look at 22 people times four, 88 contacts here. And then we look at those 88 contacts and turning around and transitioning to training for every single teacher in our school.
If I understand you correctly, understood you correctly, none of our teachers have reached out to the courses that the Edith Winthrop Teachers' Center offers.
Right.
So one, two things come to my head. The bad case is, are they boycotting it? And two, the other one is, how are we going forward to make sure they know this exists? This resource is being paid for and it's not being utilized?
Well, I think it's too bold. They're not boycotting it, they want to participate in it. They actually have to sign, our contract with Edith Winthrop is signed by our teachers' union as well as the district administration. So, no, they're definitely not boycotting it. As I said, you know, it takes time. We haven't had it for a while, and people are being pulled in a lot of different-
I don't mean to interrupt, I just was saying, um, so it's February. When did we sign this contract?
It was this winter, September.
So we have September, October, November, December, January, we're into February. We've had six months where no one's tapped the resource. What is the leadership of the school doing so we can say we didn't waste this $17,000?
So I guess, let me just clarify what Dr. Harrison just said, or say it again. It's cost neutral. We've already recouped that $17,000 in what we've highlighted for you. The teachers going to the Teachers' Center would be above and beyond and would be a bonus. There's no loss here. And our goal is to get, to build a culture over time that reminds teachers that we have this service available. It has the thing now.
So what are you doing?
Do they get in-service credits for these classes?
They can get in, wait, for which classes, Rob?
The ones that are offered in Edith Winthrop.
Yeah, not if, not if-
Not those, the ones that-
Yes, Edith Winthrop courses are offered for in-service as well as graduate. Some courses are offered for graduate as well.
Because by contract, we bring the person who loves a certain amount, they take. And so this would actually be a cost saving to the district if instead of taking somewhere else, they took it here.
But I just want to clarify, Edith Winthrop offers certain courses. They may or may not be courses that teachers are interested in taking. In other words, they create a slate of courses, as does Northern BOCs, as does Southern BOCs, as does a variety of other professional development organizations. So this is just one resource that we provide. So this is just one resource that we provide.
But so there's 77 teachers that took some courses through the Edith Winthrop Teacher Center, not the courses, but who have done training.
Yeah.
So that's almost half the teachers. There's 180 teachers.
Well, some of the, I shouldn't say 22 teachers, it's teachers and administrators for the APPR.
Right, so it's not, but it's.
But it's supporting our school. That's ultimately why.
It's 40 percent, and then you're saying the 22 go back and, and teach.
And they, so every school has a team.
Right.
And that team is turnkeying it back in there, including their principal, assistant principals, and a team of teachers.
Could you maybe, maybe circle back with us, maybe at the next meeting, next meeting, try to get a little more understanding of why our teachers aren't accessing it? Just so I can feel as if you're spending this money properly. I accept 77, I accept the members, but not here, no one's doing it. It reminds me of something goes on in my house when I say, let's all, you know, break leaves, and all of a sudden, no one shows up to help daddy break leaves.
So I think, to answer the initial question was, what is the value coming out of this? We've clearly got the value out of the $17,000. Where you and we are identifying is that there's more opportunity on the table that we have to begin to tap. And I'm actually gonna skip forward a slide that ties into a discussion that's on a similar front. And kind of point everyone to the bottom notation, that we've already, are beginning to plan a presentation on professional learning. And at a future Board of Ed meeting where we would encompass that very question. So we're on the same page. I actually did have one more question. How is that 20, how are those 22 turnkeyed, training, the rest? We tend to do it on an individual basis, obviously.
Every faculty meeting so far this year has focused on APPR and it's been consistent across all four buildings, so that's how it's been.
So these 22 are learning about the APPR and that's what they're sharing?
Our teams are training on the rubric, so our teachers are evaluated using the Charlotte data of 2011 rubric. And really, to successfully implement that, people need to understand the rubric. So the training is to understand the rubric more deeply. And the teams in each building are then going back and, I mean, they're doing that at their faculty meetings and then on a regular basis for observation and what.
Do you want to speak to this, which I've already stolen your punchline?
Uh, that was okay. I guess it was just, there was a question that was, to me, a huge question, which is about professional development and professional learning. And when Dr. Harrison asked me to give more information on this, I said, you know, I feel like we need a presentation on this with more information and more detail. The question was about measuring effectiveness. So I thought I would just share with you that all good school districts have professional learning as part of the fabric of their schools. There's not a question about having it or not having it, it's what does it look like and how do we make the best use of it and how do we make sure it's effective? There are lots of different ways to provide this professional development and professional learning, as we know, some school districts, neighboring school district, Orsley, has early release every week. And that's one way that they do it. On coaches, we used to have teaching learning facilitator, that's another way that we provide professional learning. The other ways are some of these out-of-district opportunities such as the Teacher's Center or BOCs. One of the things that I would say is in terms of measuring effectiveness though, is you need to have consistency and you need to have goals. So I am hoping now that we have this position here. Part of having a position, having an assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, that is part of my job, is to work based on district goals, to set goals for professional learning, and then we can measure them. So what I would say is, to date, I don't know that I can give you a good measure because we have not had a consistent approach to professional learning. So that would certainly be moving forward the expectation.
Do you have, I mean, is there a means for soliciting feedback from the teachers as to the effectiveness of the particular consultants that came in that day?
Oh, yeah.
So I imagine it's also part of.
That just happens right at the table. I mean, I would say that's just on.
But I mean, I know that does happen, but is there a more formal, like, cost to put into place that then you quantify that information? I know, obviously, people talk and hear, but just, I mean, you know, just so that if there's almost a trailer or a history, so if someone else comes in, you know, a year from now, they could go, oh, look, remember this person came and.
Sure, people tell. We have a feedback form that we, that teachers generally fill out. It depends on the type of work and the type of consultant it is. But generally, there's a feedback form that raises the consultant.
So more to come. We'll backpedal one slide here, and Beverly's going to jump in because there's some question in helping everyone to understand the BOCs, Arts and Education line that was in the budget last week, so Beverly.
Okay, I just thought I'd take a moment to explain how the program worked and the reimbursement factor. And I'll use the example, I think everyone's familiar with the clear water trip. So for that trip, the program fees were $6,250. BOCs charges is 50 percent administrative fee. That's added to the total cost that's on our BOCs bill that we have to pay to BOCs was $7,187.57. Of that amount, we get 53.5 percent back next year in BOCs aid, but you have to keep remembering that's next year. So the IEF is paying the difference, $3,342. But in this year's budget, we had to cover that $3,845 in order to pay BOCs this year for that.
That's the overall thing now. We've been doing it for so many years, so we're kind of getting the offset from last year and this year, so.
Right.
We need money, they almost kind of lost.
One's on the revenue side.
Right.
One's on the expense side.
Does this mean that if the IEF does a particularly good job raising money and they fund more programs?
It costs us more.
It costs us more in the current year than we get back, is that partly what explains the difference between the 80 and the 60 or whatever it was?
Yes.
Correct.
The $20,000?
Correct.
So the. Will BOCs keep paying and ever increasing amount? Do they cap out?
Every year, the BOCs aid ratio changes.
But it looks like it's 50 cents on the dollar.
Right now, it is, yes.
And then, has the IEF given us any tacit approval that they're in for an extra $10,000 this year?
The teachers apply for each individual grant.
Well, well, if we're, if we're chinging up to spend 80 grand, as IEF say, we're in for 40.
This is, this covers not just IEF, this will be PTSA and also student payments. When some trips go, students pay the difference and we get the BOCs.
So to your point, as you'll see, we're actually gonna address the 60 to 80 increase when we get to some of our revisions.
You don't have to be completely un-doubtful of this issue.
But from our standpoint, this is, looking at a budgetary line, you're obviously building controls. And we would work with our partner organizations to make sure that we're not exceeding what our budgeted contribution might be in these areas.
Can I ask a question prior to this year, of being involved with PTSA, whenever we move grants, there was always a 60-40 of the, of the total of 62,500. So now, that's, this year, it's different, it's now lower, it's not a 60-40 ratio?
Um, in prior years, the actual rate would not be.
Say that again?
They were using an assumed grade before, they weren't using the actual grade.
Whenever you pay an assumed.
So we were paying more.
So no, so the PTSA, you had, you had, you were paying more.
Yeah.
Now, well, now it looks like you charge it now less.
This is accurate. This is the accurate.
We're using an exact. We like accurate.
So with that.
We just lost money from Tony.
With that said, I want to remind everybody where we are. We were in an, in an environment that is just surrounded by clouds, dark gray clouds that are hitting us from all directions. And, you know, we could tie it into the weather and everything else that's out there, but it's an ugly year for school districts budget-wise, any public entities having trouble. We're looking at challenges associated with our catching contributions, where we're seeing increases in the contribution that's a district that the board must make, things that are beyond the board's control, exceeding a million dollars. We're looking at insurance increases, about seven and a half percent, we're looking ballpark of a quarter million dollars. Tax certs, again, something out of our control, we're seeing adjustments in tax rates primarily for commercial properties in our area. We have exposure over $3 million in that area that we have to begin to address, settlements that we know that are gonna be struck within the next year. And so we have to look at how we're going to finance that. We have proposed that we're gonna take it, we're gonna take a ban and we're gonna cover it with $700,000 over the next few years to be able to finance those costs. We're looking at unfunded mandates, and we highlight special education services here, where there's many, many mandates. And Scott Palermo, maybe you correct me, I remember a number that's like 305 or something. Mandates in the state of New York that exceed the standards that are established by the federal government. Not that we ever want to minimize the necessity for service that we have to provide for our students of need. But there's complexities associated with it that cost the district tons of money every year. So ultimately, this translates into a lot of challenges. And as we worked through those four previous budgets, we came up with figures that you see before you. And you look at this comparison, we saw our costs that drove us to a number north of $54 million. And that's maintenance and that's some other wants and needs, some other wishes here. And then we look at that increase, we're looking at $3 million, and we're looking at a budget to budget increase of 6 percent. We know that's something we can't live with, but at the same time, we recognize the challenges and we recognize it, we can't keep cutting. We can't sustain the quality education that we need for our children, that our children deserve by just constantly slashing. So we have to begin to get creative, we have to face this challenge head-on. And with that said, administration comes to the board today, having made revisions to that plan that we shared before. And we went through the budget, and Beverly is going to highlight some things that we've reduced from our proposals. There's been conversations about the wish list, beginning to put things in buckets, right? A bucket of what you have to have versus what, what maybe would be nice or luxury. Like you tell you, there's no luxuries in this budget. But we've gone, and before we have been turned to the board for guidance this evening, we've gone through and made reductions. And, and Mr. Whitman, I think you're the one talking about buckets. Well, we've tried to go through and we put things in a bucket for you tonight. And we found in those proposals, over a half a million dollars, approximately 1 percent. And Beverly, to talk through what those reductions look like this evening.
Okay, so with that, our administrator, we went through all of the lines of the budget. And these are our initial recommendations. They are all up for discussion with board, so that if you feel like something should not be there, please let us know. The first item is, we have reduced the board vegetation training by $5,000. We have eliminated the new e-policy review. We have reduced the lobby furniture by $5,000. I had stated before that we opened the bid for external auditors and that was an additional savings. We've reduced the custodial equipment by $6,000. We eliminated the new maintenance personnel position that we had initially put in the budget. We've eliminated 50 percent of district projects, mainly painting, et cetera, to try and save some money. We eliminated the new teaching assistant that was requested at Dow Lane. We eliminated the new, what, six whole SED positions that were requested at the high school. We eliminated the new in-service program that Dr. Korf outlined. We reduced the arts and ed, my favorite, by the $20,000.
After all that, you're going flat?
I am. We eliminated one new special ed teaching position. We eliminated the new requested clerical position at CPS. We reduced special ed tuition fees, and that would be to reevaluate, due to reevaluation of the potential student placements. We reduced the edutac contract, they have agreed to remain frozen at their current year rate. The next four line items are just internal tweaking. The high school had made some adjustments and the additions were included in last presentation, but we had previously presented the guidance presentation, so those are just minor changes. Then we eliminated the three new requested middle school clubs. We are recommending to not reinstate JV field hockey or the JV lacrosse. We're eliminating the requested full-time athletic trainer and going to just the per diem rate that we're doing now. And because we're not reinstating JV and field hockey, we're eliminating those official fees. We had our bid opening for workers' comp insurance, which will be on the agenda of the next board meetings. And I think I can take another $10,000 out of that line item. And I now have a final rate for health insurance. I had budgeted 8 percent, it's actually going up to 7.5, so that was an additional reduction in the budget. I did have to make a couple of additions. I found out there was one special education aid that had been added higher in January, which was not included in my initial presentation, so I had to add that addition back in. And the teachers' retirement system, I had said that they had given us a range of 15 and a half to 16 and a half percent. And I had used the middle growth 16 percent, it's actually 16 and a quarter, so I had to increase that line item. With all of those adjustments, our budget increase is now down to 5.02 percent.
Do you want to take questions on the.
I can take questions both.
Post cuts now or wait till the end, because I don't want to scale the thunder.
No, go right ahead.
First of all, I do, from where we were last week, I want to commend both of you and the administration for finding a full percentage point. I think it's great. One of the things in the list, and I think that certain of us have shared sort of list of things we saw cutting, I know I did, I'm looking through my list. And sort of, I felt that the administration sort of agreed with a lot of things the board had concerns with about ads. One of the things I don't see on here is the $100,000 for bus monitors. And, you know, we've thought a lot about this over the years. I know it was recommended by the Budget Task Force last year and even this year, so the task force this year is something for consideration. You know, in full honesty, it's something that affects me a lot because my youngest is going to kindergarten in the coming year, so it's something that personally affects me. And I would love to see that we keep the bus monitors, but at this point, I'd be willing to recommend that we discontinue having bus monitors and use that $100,000 for other purposes within the budget to the extent that the administration sees. I don't know, at the, I know we're in our conversation, I don't know how the other board members feel. But I, I just, I don't see the value in what we're paying for the bus monitors moving forward, especially when we're looking at things like, we're not gonna be able to paint our classrooms that we can. And I'm not trying to equate a safety issue with painting, so nobody quote me on the blogs about that, because that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm just saying that I don't think that we're getting the value under $100,000 for the bus monitors. And in a situation where we're looking at this cut, can we use that $100,000? Can we better spend that money?
We absolutely hear what you're saying. Right now, I don't know, the guidance that you're gonna give us at the end of the evening. But I can tell you, working very closely with our administration, and I have to say, this is an all-hands-on-death effort. And all of my colleagues deserve a tremendous amount of credit here. We've mapped out, or begun to map out scenarios that will lead to that presentation on March 5th. And it's not pretty. But our first pass at this was to demonstrate where we believe we can find savings, and we think we did that. But this effort was very deliberate, because I started off with a maintenance budget. But this effort was very deliberate, because I started off with a maintenance budget focusing on maintaining what we have in place today. And when you look at the reductions that are before you right now, it is in spirit with that first presentation. I can absolutely assure you that that is one of the things that will be discussed if the guidance that you give us, as we anticipated, may define more savings. That is something that would be on that list. Some of the conversation that then follows March 5th is some of that prioritization, right? And started to looking at where the public places value and how we're spending money, where the board wants to give us guidance on how you want us to develop that spending plan. Bus monitors are a piece of that. We wanted to protect programs, and I got to say, as much as we're here to present a budget and the most efficient budget we can in the end product, I got to tell you, there's a big human side to the work that we do here. And we certainly don't want to go down a path of where we're having to let off employees. So with that said, that consideration is there. I can tell you that the number is closer to $90,000 than it is $100,000 to the fact that we have it on the list. So based upon the guidance you can give us, that is a conversation we'll likely have. If it doesn't appear on that list, that may then fall into the conversation we have publicly about prioritization.
Simple question, the sports that are being recommended not to be reinstated, are they not being reinstated because of lack of interest?
They are programs that we currently do not have in place that were taken off. Mr. McCormick, you may interject if I'm off base here, but there wasn't the interest in the past that facilitated the program, correct?
Both those teams have had numbers with participation in the last two years.
Meaning dropping?
Dropping, yeah.
And, okay. I mean, just give me an idea on the boys lacrosse team, what kind of numbers are there on JV?
We did not have it last year.
You did not even have a team last year?
We did not have a JV team last year.
You had an A team and a B team last year.
We had modified A and B last year, so the idea this year is that we will hopefully, but we don't know next year going forward what those numbers will be like. And we have a low seventh grade class right now currently, so the numbers could be, and we're also graduating a lot at the end of next year as well for lacrosse.
Okay.
So it's a projection.
Kind of driving at is, it would really bother me that we turn around and tell some, you know, student athlete that you can't play a sport because we don't have the money, all right? I would like to let the kids know that we're possibly thinking of doing that. We'll try to figure out a way, if you want to figure out a way, helping us raise the money. And I don't think we're supposed to deny any kid the ability to play a sport if in fact, we're going to give them the opportunity to help raise the money.
And we've had help in the past between Urban Youth Lacrosse, which has donated money, so there's been ways to help those programs in the past. But based on the numbers, not having JV field hockey, now the numbers for modified field hockey were high last year, but we were also losing some from varsity.
Just to be clear, I completely agree with you, but you're saying that the reason you've asked that these be put back in is that you have requisite numbers necessary to actually field a JV field hockey team and a JV boys lacrosse?
Exactly.
What numbers are we looking at for the size of each of those lacrosse? Do you have any idea?
I would say for lacrosse at least 15, and for field hockey, could be anywhere 14 to 16, based on numbers coming up. That's why we're putting them back in, that's why they were in the budget, but now if we're looking at cuts, those would be two that would be coming out.
Because, you know, along the lines of sports, I guess we'll have things on here, but just to follow that, I believe the current budget also requested reinstating two assistant coaches for lacrosse punching and wrestling. And, you know, I guess you've got away with that if something means kids are going to want better opportunity by creating a new team versus adding an assistant coach, whereas maybe someone could volunteer help, you know, I think we need to look long and hard at that. It might be more opportunities for the kids to add the new teams and figure out another way to address the needs of the assistant coaching, so.
All I'm saying is, if you guys could just put your thinking caps on and maybe, is there a creative way to save the team that possibly has the request to the families of these kids, it's time for you to do a fundraiser.
We're talking $8,700.
I understand, but that's divided by two teams, so it's not a lot of dollars. And maybe that spurs the reaction from the community to come to the aid of the kids. You know, to me, if we're supposed to be, if we're all taking the haircut here, we're all supposed to be trying to think of creative ways to get what we would like to have.
There's layers of other creativity because it's tied to the athletic program that would come up in that next round of discussion. Because if you recall within the budget, there we have a cycle for replenishing uniforms. And we have an expenditure of about $16,000 roughly to purchase uniforms for next year. So we have to, if we're going to be creative, we have to look at those things as well. But your point is well taken.
Got your questions. The reducing the lobby furniture $5,000, how much more is left in that?
$5,000.
Okay, so you're just cutting it.
I do want to add, that's an equipment line and lobby furniture was one of the descriptors in that line, so there's other equipment that we're purchasing.
I don't know if you're looking at it altogether or if you're still looking at it. The 50% of the district projects, painting etc., is that, give us a sense, is that a hardship? Is, I mean, are we going to notice this or is this stuff that isn't?
I noticed the need to paint our schools the first time I walked in.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about this one. But is this eliminating painting entirely?
No, it is scaling back. We can say that would roughly affect 55% of the painting that we were targeting.
Painting will continue.
We could eliminate the bus monitors, add the painting back in and add the hockey bench.
Right.
Correct.
For instance?
For instance?
I'm not doing my question, sorry. The eliminate the new in-service program, I couldn't remember what Raina's in-service program was.
That was supposed to provide design-driven professional development in the district. Right, I'm going to go. You can teach your students.
Okay. The special education teaching position, you know, the way that Scott made it sound like we really need that, is that the one that would be at the high school?
This will not be a hardship because of adding one position in another area, which I cannot elaborate on, due to seniority and helping. I think this position would already be covered. I was going to access one person.
That's still intact, all right, that's good. The reducing the special education tuition, that's obviously a huge piece of this.
Mr. Palermo?
Number, is that legitimate?
No, we actually had a couple of students that we anticipated were going to need placements to turn up, they're not going to, so.
That's very good.
Couldn't that change?
That's it.
I could always change, we change tomorrow if somebody needs a new residence.
I just can't change it all. Oh, and I guess the last one is just a point about, since there are new people in the audience, that when we talked about eliminating the three new Main Street clubs, the request that Mr. Brad made, so, clubs, is that we would have the PTSA fund those, that was the request.
It was a hypothetical suggestion, it was more of a, you know, yeah, it wasn't really a formal request, it was something that.
I think we're making.
Boy, if the PTSA came up with that idea on their own, we would accept it full pardon.
It's on case.
Electra, Mr. Subtitles are going to say yes.
Which is the way that.
There was a video I think.
Nobody watches that, I think it was. It just sounded so cold, like Bev said, eliminate three new middle school clubs, so.
Flash and move.
Yeah.
But the workers' compensation insurance, we're proposing the concept of self-funding, all right? And we've talked about this in committee meeting, we've kind of glanced over it here. I'm not comfortable with the idea of self-funding it, because I don't understand what risks the district is taking on. And my concern, I know you said there's this overarching, you know, policy that we would buy in case there was a big thing. I really need to get my arms around this, because if somebody falls off a ladder and is paralyzed for the rest of their life, they could bankrupt the school district. And I don't know if we want to self-fund that, and I know there's policies for it, but before we go down the road that we're self-funding, I think we have to understand it better.
Well, I have experience in that, in my prior district, we did it for over 15 years. And what you do is you pay, or party administrator, to manage it, a very small fee. Then you have an excess policy, and that would pay, if you had a huge catastrophic injury, that would cover it. In between that, you self-fund the amount in a reserve fund, okay? So our claims have been very, very small. I'm planning on putting two to three times the amount of our last year's amount of claims, which would be about $14,000. So I'm budgeting probably about $40,000 to put in that reserve fund to cover next year's claims. The reserve fund is closely scrutinized and controlled by the state of New York, and our auditors have to monitor it every year so that you cannot overfund it. I know that was one of your original concerns. You have to demonstrate the amount of claims and your past history, and also you could not fund, for example, more than you were unfunded for in your catastrophic policy. So for example, if you have a $400,000 deductible on your catastrophic policy, you should have $400,000 in the reserve, but not $500,000. So I would be gradually building it up over the years. The amount that I would have in that workers' comp insurance line item next year would cover the fee for the TPA, the insurance policy, as well as the initial funding.
I accept everything you say, and I accept that you've seen this come on in your district for, previous district for 15 years. As a businessman, I trust and then I verify, all right? So I need to see the TPA come in here and talk to us and present to us. I need to see the insurance company come in here and present to us and show us how this works. I love you to death, don't get me wrong, all right? But you're not an insurance expert, you're a school business expert, and I'm not willing to take on millions of dollars of risk on a hope that we just keep not having a catastrophic collateral.
Well, that's not what you said, right? There's an overarching policy. Well, let's put numbers on. I mean, if we're funding $40,000 into a reserve fund next year, based upon the fact that on average we have $14,000 of claims.
Right now, this past year, you have $14,000 worth of claims and you pay $169,000.
I believe you.
Okay, so let's look at the other hypothetical that is concerned. We fund $40,000 into this reserve and for some crazy, something crazy happens, we have a million dollar claim.
Yeah.
We have $40,000 budgeted for it. How do we pay that million dollars?
The catastrophic policy would cover everything other than the deductibles and usually workers' comp claim policies now are $400, $450,000. So that difference would then be covered by your fund balance.
Okay, so we are only covered for $450,000 of a major type of claim.
You are covered, that's the deductible.
Oh, $450,000 wasn't a deductible, okay.
Yeah, so of that million, $550,000 will be covered by the catastrophic policy.
Make me my point. I think it's a great idea, all right? I think we could save hundreds of thousands of dollars over the next 10 years, all right? It'll save a teacher's job every year. I want somebody other than you to prove that to me, when their company's name is on a letterhead and we find out their creditworthiness, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's all.
We'll discuss what that opportunity will look like and we'll, as you said, we discussed it in the subcommittee, if we can bring those professionals in the subcommittee and committee can report out on the experience.
We have to do it pretty quickly, because unfortunately, we have to, our current consortium, we have the United States consortium pull up, so it's by the end of March I have to.
Time out, we can say we're in on, and if we just cancel the policy, what kind of reimbursement?
We'll work on the list. So why don't we move on with revenue?
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I couldn't, but I'll kind of go with, so the $5,000 out of the war there, and then the original budget was $12,500, so I guess by my way, I'm thinking there might be a couple more that need to eke out, I know that's a big thing, but.
That line item is not just for training, it also covers the membership thing, association?
Okay. You know, I guess the big one for me is when we look at eliminating that Point Four Social Studies and Point Two, and sure, there's a rationale for the numbers and things, but for the most part, you know, I've always been, I've always said that, that I think the most important is, you know, what you receive in the classroom, and that's probably the last place I want to cut. And, you know, I think that we need to think long and hard if we're going to be cutting classes in Alexis, even if the numbers might be close at this point in time. And is that the best thing for our students when we're looking at everything else out here? I know we get a big bang for the buck, so I certainly would want to hear.
But just to be clear, this isn't cutting existing positions, this is cutting things that were proposed to be new and then just not adding.
And I think by far and away, it's the place where a lot of people feel pretty strongly, myself included, that we need to look at is how do we enhance our high school, how do we make it stronger, how do we build it for the future? And I think by year after year, asking them to cut here and slice here and dice here, at the end, where you're going to be left, when there's something that's probably not what we want to be. And then this could kind of circle back to what I talked about a little bit before, which is my goal of long-term planning and how I think this year we really need to use this systemic stone to plan long-term. And I feel most strongly about that when it comes to the kids in the classrooms and schools. And I feel strongly about we need to be looking this year as to where we want to be in three years in the classroom. And is this going to, is cutting this going to get us there? Is leaving it, paying a little more this year and then building over time going to get us there? You know, we really haven't gotten into those discussions, and I think those are critical. Along those lines, what I don't see on here, well, this is cutting, but, you know, I also feel that we've talked a lot about the strength of the guidance department, and I know in prior years, we talked about making that a full position and not a Point Five, and, you know, perhaps that will enable us to provide a better service for our kids and build that discipline degree we need. Again, I get back to the long-term planning, so I'm going to, I know this is mainly cutting, but I think this is the time to just throw that out there, that I think it's a very important factor that we should not, it should not go undiscussed. And I think we should at least address it as a whole.
If I can ask about the guidance, in our original projections, we indicated that there was concern that BOCES wasn't going to fund the shared position that we have in guidance. And since then, BOCES has returned to the table and committed to funding that half of the position. And we discussed that previously, so I'm assuming your direction is saying that your interest would be looking at a full-time Irvington-only position?
Yes, and I think, given, again, taking a step back and looking where we can spend on our schools and do better by our students, I feel like guidance is one area that just seems to come up year after year. And I think that when we look at that also, you look at, you know, A is the case load of the individual counselors, and then B, you know, how effective is the model where a chairperson really isn't involved in the day-to-day? Perhaps that's not really, perhaps that isn't the best strategy for us, again, for the long-term. So I just think we need to discuss it at this point, because I think that that's, again, it gets back to what's important to me, which is the kids in the classroom. The other thing about long-term planning, something that I ask every year that I've been on the board, which is I don't give a long-term plan, I know we always do a good job of asking the principals what they want to cut in their schools, but I don't know how to get the big picture without understanding what they would add if money wasn't an issue. And I always find it interesting to hear that and then put that in the harbor with everything else, so as we're making these cuts, we could inadvertently be cutting something that perhaps is much more important than we realize, due to, you know, a wish list of a principal who's living in and breathing it. So I would ask that perhaps we could talk to the principals about getting us, you know, where they would like to see schools in a few years and what they would do.
We're talking.
If I may, Robin, we're talking about a path of things that we've already committed to, looking at developing longer-range plans and goals. And I think we also look to this year, and not that it's excusing things, but the idea that we've had significant transitions going this year. And I think there hasn't been necessarily that same type of opportunity that we'd all like to join together, whether that's a board and a community, or a staff and teachers, to paint that picture of what we want our schools to look like down the road. And I think that's something that we're committed to. I appreciate those words. I do want to go back and just touch base on your final comments with respect to the guidance position. I'm glad you used the word perhaps at the end in talking about the attention on the daily operations. And I can say with confidence that our guidance chair, Stargellston, who's in the audience tonight, will give away, that he's intimately involved in the daily operations, and has done a tremendous amount of work with the guidance counselors and mapping out just the things that you're talking about, the direction, who they are today, where they want to be down the road. He's done a tremendous amount of work in mapping out guidance activities and identifying needs that exist within the department. As Mr. Whitney will attest to, that we were talking with Lester in the hallway before the meeting began, and we were talking about the prospect of Lester coming in and giving a presentation that would begin to address the things that he's seeing and the vision that he's developing for the department with the counselors and the high school staff in the second meeting in March. So we're going down that path, so certainly more to come.
Anyway, so again, under the guise of long-term planning, how all these things come in, and especially, you know, during my heart, to get back to the cutting classes, we need to take a hard look at that. Again, even, I don't want to cut the sports teams, but I want to cut the class of less than the sports teams. You know, and then I guess just going down another, kind of circling back to the list here, is, I guess my question first, that is, you know, looking at eliminating the clerical position for PPS, I know that one of the concerns with PPS is, you know, one or two sloppy mistakes kind of costing us so much more, you know, count-wise, pedi, what is it? Pedi-wise, pedi-wise, count-wise, like, you know, so is that something you're really comfortable with? Can we really get by without this position, or is it going to cost us to go along with that?
No, I guess like time itself, but I think, I mean, when I look at some of the other things, as a teacher or as a departmental, maybe that's quite the point, I guess, I don't think that's, these are tough decisions, I don't think there's anything up on that board that people are just heavily trained in doing that.
Again, you asked for our thinking.
Now, and then, say, this is all priorities, right? And establishing priorities, and come back to what our mission here was, was to identify opportunities to maintain what we have in value today. And that's what's reflected in this list. And we can, over the next couple of weeks, we're going to develop a plan that's going to identify far greater, potentially more meaningful cuts. So as much as I think there's strong emotion and some critical thinking tied to the items that have been proposed today, I think we need to look at those within the context of what that next step looks like. And when we get to that next step, again, based on the guidance that you're going to provide tonight, there may be opportunities for trade-off in certain areas. There may be opportunities for, you know, greater thinking from the whole of Irvington that's going to lead us down a different path. So what we're saying here isn't something that's a finale. What we're doing is demonstrating what we believe we can do, and what we can believe we can do with some responsibility. Do we want more? Yes. You say, three years down the road, what does a principal want the school district to look like? We need a lot of these things there, and I think a lot of these folks will agree to it. But it's at the cost of what is the question? And those are the conversations we start having in a moment.
To your point about the point four social studies position, point two, that must be partly motivated by class size.
Class size.
Right. Can you share any information about that?
Dr. Hall? Sure. Let's start with the social studies. We have a situation where a number of teachers, contractually, they can teach one hundred and eight students. So we have a number, the majority of teachers are bumped up against that right now. We're going to slightly increase our enrollment next year at the high school, so it gets that squeeze gets even tighter. So where that ultimately goes, or could go, and I think point two, if you had to redo that, point two would probably, you know, give us more flexibility than, I don't know if we need actually the point four. That'd be nice, but the point two, I think, is going to be fairly important, because what happens if you have teachers teaching economics and bumps up against one hundred and eight, but you don't have all the kids in economics who need it as a graduation requirement? What you'll have to do then is you'll have to take another elective, sociology of women's studies, civil war, or whatever, and replace that with economics, so that you can make sure that everybody has that graduation requirement. So ultimately, what it could do is reduce electives in that department. So that point two would give you more flexibility, just to make sure the teacher numbers are accounted for. The French piece, as I think I explained last week, we have a situation where we've now doubled up in a class. We have an honors level combined with a regents level, being taught in the same class, because that's what we have staffing-wise, and they're small numbers. The numbers are not large, so that's what we've done to try to accommodate. Next year, the numbers actually are going to be larger, and the point two French is designed to try to split that, so you would have an honors level separate from a regents level. Again, the numbers are not going to be huge in that, but they'd be respectable. So that's the point two in the French.
Can I ask you just one more question about that? In the not-too-distant past, we had class sizes of a hundred and eighty to two hundred, I think.
No, never got that one. So one hundred and seventy-two was the largest we've had.
Oh, I thought it was up at a hundred and eighty. And I won't even ask my question. Thanks.
Everyone has asked questions, so I'm not going to repeat. My only JV sports and JV field topic, I just want to make one comment. I disagree with what Jim said about fundraising. We cut those two teams because the numbers weren't there. If the numbers are there, to be fair to all the sports, I think you have to add it back in, and if we have to, if everyone has to fundraise to bring these two teams, or tweak it another way, but you can't just pick these two teams out because they have the numbers. So if they have the numbers, I feel like you have to be fair, and they have to come back in, and we have to figure out another way, whether it's trainers or fundraising. Like, I know Jim's point before was that these two teams have to fundraise to come back in, and I think that's unfair. Either everyone fundraises, or we find another way, but I think it's unfair to pinpoint these two teams and cut them and not bring them back in, even though their numbers are there. But if that's the case, then I think you have to cut all the JV teams and make it fair across all the sports.
Okay. So our revenue has stayed the same, and with the new adjusted budget, it brings us down to a tax levy of forty-eight million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven sixty-one. Our tax levy cap has changed, and I'll explain that in a minute, so that now we're over the tax cap by one million, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, based on what I just presented. The tax cap calculation, again, before I was giving you estimates, and I didn't have all the information. I now have information. The assessment growth factor, the state comptroller has to give us by February fifteenth, I now have that. And the district has an increase of one percent in assessment growth, which was able to bump up our formulas. Part of that is pilots. And the exemptions, again, I elaborated before, is mainly debt service. There was a huge change with debt service. And then now that we have the teacher retirement system rate set, it is over two percent, and they do allow us to add some money back into the exemptions for that. All that being said, our now allowable tax levy is forty-seven million, one thirty-two oh oh one, which is two point six percent increase. So our current year's budget of fifty-one million, one fifty-six, the current year, our tax rate is six hundred and thirteen dollars, eight four cents. The budget that we presented tonight, and again, this is all very fluid, because nothing's said yet, but you also, I just got the assessed values in, and the assessed values for Irvington have increased, which is a definite positive. So that would bring our estimated tax rate on this budget to six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, seven four cents per thousand, which is a four point two-two percent increase, tax rate increase. I did a five-year trend, and you can see outlined are the budgets over the last number of years, well, the tax rates. For a five-year average, our budget increase would be one point two-three-nine percent, and our five-year tax increase would be two point four-two-four percent, based on the budget that I presented tonight. So I made you this sheet last week, and I updated it. So our proposed budget now of fifty-three million, seven twenty-five, is a two point five million dollar increase. And keep that in mind, our budget's one of two point five million. Some of the factors that are not within our control is we know we have tax certs coming down from the court. So we budgeted seven hundred thousand dollars of that two point five million dollar increase. Employee benefit increases, which are not within district control, social security, health insurance, the pension plan, is one point three million. If you took those two factors out of our increase, our actual budget increase is five hundred and one thousand, and that's for salaries, supplies, everything. Our tax cap, and then stop right there, and at the bottom. Now, the tax cap increase that we are not receiving due to debt service formula being part of the tax cap formula is six hundred and sixteen thousand. Our allowable tax cap increase is one point two million. If the debt service had not been in that formula, we would be eligible for a one point eight million dollar increase. And you can see all those factors, we would have definitely been under.
So if you go back, I have one interesting figure. If you look at the illustration that we gave a few moments ago, that the board had so many questions over, looking at that five hundred and one thousand dollars, pretty closely matches up with that number, I think it was about five hundred and two thousand dollars, to show how close we are. When we look back at this slide too, where we're showing our budget trends, you can say certainly the last couple of years, the increases were a little heavier, that drove the numbers up. But you're looking at a period of time when the board demonstrated fiscal responsibility, and really had the taxpayers really in their mind to try to contain taxes. Some of those, some of that constraint back then, we could say is hurting us a little bit today, because we didn't necessarily foresee the tax cap at that point in time. And because of that trend, back we look, nine, ten, particularly ten, eleven, we limited base growth, and that hinders us today. But overall, I think that the message here is to look at, you know, what the board has done, and the board has worked, to try to contain taxes for a period of time. This tells its own story. It's a broken formula. Two percent doesn't add up to be two percent, it's clear, because we saw before, our cap, even with all the penalties that Bev has pointed out, were over two percent of what the cap would be permissible. There's districts in our area that have situations where their two percent cap is almost four percent, because of how their particular situation works out. There's a lot of challenges here, folks. When we go back and look at tax certs, tax certs are hurting us terribly. We've been in a position where the district has gone through an exhaustive tax cert fund. Other districts around us are not getting tax certs at the rate we're experiencing, and that's something that's well beyond our control. Some people may want to go say, well, let's go and reassess all the properties. Well, heaven forbid, what would happen then? You know, there's a lot of question mark there. But the bottom line is, there's so many issues that are well beyond what are, beyond our controls at this point. So with all that said, we know we have hurdles before us. You know, we can point to these four areas that I've identified. We know we have been a fiscally responsible project. You know, we know we have to continue to provide valid programs. We have to have a budget that provides opportunity for future growth, maybe, Robin, to the spirit of what you were referencing before. And then we have to continue to meet our evolving, complex needs. Tax certs are a part of that. You know, there's going to be more tax certs. The growth in our tax base that Bev pointed to just a few minutes ago, you know, as much as we can say that's great, helps keep the tax rate down, because the base is larger, it only makes you think, is there a greater opportunity for more tax certs down the road? So that may be a double-edged sword. So here's the conversation, here's the question that I know the board has been so eagerly waiting for, is what direction do you want us to go in? We need some target. There's some illustration here that will kind of maybe guide us, but let's keep in mind, we need a target to go to the next step. We need a target to develop my proposal that you'll see on the fifth. But when we go beyond that, we recognize the fifth, as much as it is a proposal, there's conversation that follows. And that's where some of that discussion about priorities will come into play. And then we have many meetings before us to have this conversation, a number in this very room, and a number of other forums that you can see, whether it's administration meeting with different groups, things that the PTSA is sponsoring. But again, we need participation, we need communication throughout this entire process. But with that said, I'll leave this screen now.
Can I ask a question of the building principals to try to help me here? I'm sorry, but it's.
Why don't you ask me the question, and then I'll.
Could I ask you a question, and then you ask the building principals? In each one of the classes, and if I understand, the one hundred and eight students being taught per day is a reference that we've heard about in chapters on, in each one of the buildings, how many of the teachers are not teaching a hundred and eight students a day?
We could pull up the data and report it back, just not so that we give you off the top of our head at that point.
Just to be clear, contractually, that applies only to the high school English and social studies teachers. It does not apply to more language teachers, math teachers, science teachers. It's only those two areas. And this sort of thing goes back, because they assign a lot of writing, and was designed to make sure they didn't have more kids.
And therefore, the math and other teachers can teach more than a hundred?
Correct.
And is that the, is that the, is that the same in the middle school, in Main Street School, in Dallas Lane?
Well, the hundred and eight is secondary, so the hundred and eight applies to no school or high school. But the elementary teacher, they.
What I'm trying to induce is, do we have any teachers that are not being, not taking on a full workload, and therefore, they can take on more work, that would then allow us not to even consider getting rid of teachers?
So I'm going to ask my colleague, Dr. Corr, her responsibility, over to see human resources, to work with the principals in developing what that analysis would look like. But there's complicating factors here.
I know there are.
You know, so elementary, there's a different discussion on this, right? But when we're looking at the secondary schools, certification plays a huge role here, in looking at where that can be, and scheduling needs and so on. But we will look at that data, and we'll certainly come back with an answer.
Yeah, I guess I'll kick it off, and I don't have anything prepared, but, because I don't know if, we've talked a bit about specifics. Oh, no, no, we're going to have public comment. Yeah, absolutely. I'm not ending the discussion, I'm just, I thought we were going to have a discussion first, based upon the presentation. I'm struck by a few things in the presentation. First thing is, if anybody watching, or at least a couple of us who have processed laws a couple of months, hopefully, it's clear to everyone that we need to go over the tax cap, believe me, we need to go over the tax cap this year. It is beyond our control. I'm glad that you put the numbers up here about staying in a zero percent budget increase, or staying the two percent tax cap. I mean, even looking at the one percent of cuts that all of us had concerns about, sort of by the lineup, and these are all things mostly that the principals are asking the administration for as adults, and we're saying, well, we should have that. It's clear to me, at least, and not the bottom line, but we're not going to be able to find another million dollars in cuts in this bare. another $1 million in cuts in this bare bones budget without necessarily affecting the educational programs that we provide to our kids. It's just not going to happen. You're necessarily talking about cutting teachers, which means that you're cutting programs. I don't think we should do that. And I completely agree with Mrs. Curner that, and if we're looking to give direction to the administration on how to move forward with the budget, that now is the time, since we are forced to go over the tax cap because of the costs that are being imposed upon us beyond our control, now is the time for us to put truly our money where our mouth has been over the last few years of talking about a plan, and literally draw a line in the sand and not further sacrifice our educational programs so that we have to pay a pension number that the state is imposing upon us. Now, I don't know how we get to particulars in that, but I would say that if the administration feels that we need 0.4 to make sure that our kids are actively being taught social studies in high school, or 0.2 to make sure that our kids are actively being taught French, now's the time to put those positions in. Because next year, we're going to be judged again in the 2% tax cap by the budget we set this year. You know, there was the concern years ago in trying to keep our numbers down to cut for cutting sake. And we see how that, you know, it's sort of, it's come home to roost now, a lot of us thought that happened, that we are forced now to go over the budget cap. But I don't believe that now is the time to further cut either teaching personnel that we feel the administration feels and the parents feel are necessary to teach our kids or to cut our educational programs. I don't know how that, maybe that is the direction if we all agree. Chris, we go and look, and that factors into whether we get rid of bus monitors or we reshuffle the deck chairs, as it were. But I think that's, is my recommendation as to what we should do.
Chris, just to clarify, and this is not a speech or question, are you, at the next meeting, the March 5 meeting, are you planning on presenting numbers which get us down to the tax cap so that the district can see? Because you had implied that in the last meeting, and I think is one of the things that we might agree on is that maybe that's unnecessary to go all the way to the tax cap based on what Bob just said, but, you know, it's a question. My hope would be that we wouldn't have to go that far. My hope would be that maybe following Bob's comment, that if the board can give us a target that isn't driving us to get down to that number of $1.1 million, you give us that target and we'll map out what we see as the best way to get there. And then we can have conversations about the priorities and the value associated with some of those cuts. You know, we look at a process where we have a month of discussion after that, and that month of discussion, if there's areas that maybe we begin to object to after the thinking and the dialogue around it, well, then it's our responsibility to go back and find some alternatives for you to consider. Does anybody want to see what the cuts would look like to get us another $1 million?
I actually would.
Do you want to see that?
The one thing that, the one thing that I, we could maybe get questions around is the one piece I feel like that we haven't got up until this point, not this much, as I said.
Yeah, we can do whatever.
As much as we ask people, you know, weigh in, we've got a few emails, but I don't feel like it's really hit a lot of people's radar yet. And I would like to kind of get a better sense of, you know, what people are thinking out there. So...
Let us open the...
Questions, and then kind of have, maybe...
We can return to our dialogue.
And one last second before we do that, Bev, we're talking about a 4% $1 million increase in the average homeowners' taxes, or...
4 points.
So if we don't change tax rate, but that's not their, the tax bill, now we have to take into consideration asserts and how that affects it, or not?
Let's open.
No, that's, as it is right now, whatever we assess, such as we call now...
Okay, so what we're now, without changing anything other than what we saw in the columns, we are going to have a 4.25% tax deficit.
And that compares, that compares to 3.65 last year.
I understand, I just wanted to...
Right, but to underscore that, the new tax assessment that went out, which meant we get more tax revenue coming in, is actually incredibly great news for us. Because in the past, when you looked at a budget to budget, the inclusion tax increase was higher right now percentage. That's how the math worked out. So what that piece of news did was essentially almost changed the dynamic of the equation.
We got lucky for the first time in three years.
Really great, huge, huge great news. Like, that's what it is, oh, it's awesome.
Yeah, and a lot of people were doing it.
Really, it's an amazingly great piece of news. I mean, it made a 6% budget to 4% setup the 8% which is incredible. So that's so important to underscore.
I think your point is well taken, but I do want to clarify one aspect. It's not additional revenue for the district, the tax base has grown, so it spreads the burden.
Yeah, sorry.
So that helps contain the rate of 4.2. Without that increase, that number would have been higher at the same dollar amount.
Okay, let's open things up to the community to ask questions about the budget. I guess, we don't have a microphone, so if you could just stand...
Yell your name.
Oh, ask questions or comment. It doesn't need to be, or you have to phrase it in the form of a question. Is that jeopardy? Jeopardy? Please.
Can I stand up? Yes, it's just where I am. Hi, I'm Allison Wagispa. First of all, I thank you for saying what you said. I really think that that's the sentiment in the room, that if we're going to go over, let's just do it right this time, and whether it's 4.4 or 4.8 or whatever, I just think it's worth it to stay with the focus, keep teachers where they should be, and spend a little more money if we're already going to fight this fight of getting the supermajority for the tax cap overall. So I think that, I mean, for purposes of one, I agree with you, but I hope I'm speaking for more than one. The busing thing that you brought up, the bus monitor, I also have an incoming kindergarten next year, so I feel the same angst when it comes to the bus monitor, but I also see the value in maybe eliminating those people, should we? I mean, that's all, that's half of what we need to get that 153 or maybe more than half, so that's something to think about. My two cents being a PTSA Vice President, Dowsley, the teaching assistant position at Dow's, which was on that list, I know it's not a teacher that's teaching students every second of every day, but it is a teaching professional that impacts our, would impact our students on a daily basis. Dowsley is requesting this teaching assistant that will be supervising, being a coach at lunchtime, recess, dealing with behavior issues in the school. And it's something that's sorely missed right now, and I can tell you that what I hear from parents on an almost daily basis are issues that are happening in the lunchroom and at recess because there is not an authority figure available to be there all the time. And these are little, little kids, and there's a lot of them, and they're all together running around outside or sitting at lunch, and again, having an incoming kindergarten, this is a sensitive topic for me, but also being in the school, I have a third grader as well, and knowing that this has been an ongoing issue, and we've had lots and lots of conversations about it with Mr. Allen, and this is his hope in trying to improve that situation. So I would just ask for it to consider, although that's not a teacher that's in a room reducing the class size number, that they would really be touching the children every day and making a positive impact, so. And lastly, bus, when we talked about the bus monitors, we've also talked in the past about expanding our radius for busing and trying to reduce costs with busing in that way. I don't know if that's something that's come up at all or something that you guys are thinking about, but that's another way to cut costs, both for in-district and out-of-district radius changes.
Well, on that, I get the, personally, on the out, just our hands are much more tied than in-district. The way that we determine, the cost savings would have been changing the in-district. But when you looked at expanding the radius, because we're such a small district, it would exclude so many people that personally, I think, I think all of us didn't feel the community would support that change, and it was presented ad nauseam last year, and talked about, you know, this bunch would save this much, this must be...
I just remember there was like a $300,000 number of savings, and I don't remember exactly what was attached to that, and maybe it doesn't make sense because we're such a small district, but again, something like that gets us where we want to be.
Yeah, I mean, we can get back into the discussion, but I think that we've all determined that we wouldn't have the support of the community.
So we haven't set up a process this year for even having representatives do that.
Right. That's a good point. People don't know, we can eliminate the bus monitors without a vote. You know, it's just a budget amendment versus changing the radius would require a vote with the community. A separate vote with the community outside of the budget. Anyone else, please?
Hi, my name is Matt Copper. I have a son in a high school and a daughter at Dowsley, so I have a kind of global view of what's going on in the schools. I wanted to thank Robert Grado, Bob Grados, and Robin Curner for pointing out what Allison pointed out, which is, my sense in the community, and I kind of talk a lot to a lot of people to access, is that people do want you to exceed the cap, and that perhaps it would be best to contemplate the budget in the way that Bob and Robin were talking about. I also think, Robin, in terms of the high school, in terms of what Dr. Mo was talking about, I mean, I can speak to you personally about what we're talking about. You can talk very lively about what's going on in the French class. So the honors students are with the region students. However, you've got one teacher who's been put in there because we had to cut last year because nobody wanted to go over the cap. The best French teacher we have in the district is now elsewhere, and I won't say anything about the current teacher, but she's basically got...
Let me just stop for one second, please, only because one rule we have, we can't discuss...
All right, I want to say that. What I just want to say is, you have a classroom with honors and region students being taught the exact same curriculum, receiving the exact same assignments, and being given the exact same tests. So I'll leave it at there. Moving on to the aid that Mr. L has supported and Allison talked about so well, I think this is a person who the board and Superintendent Dr. Harrison should understand is very important to character education and how it's actually put into effect at that school so that the things that are taught in those classrooms are brought out in the areas where character education actually is played out, which is during recess in the cafeteria. Thirdly, I would like to know what happened to the 100K position for technology? And the question is, if the 100K position for technology that was requested at the last budget for elementary school K to 5 weren't filled with 100K personnel person, what would be the effect on the school district in terms of us perhaps not following certain mandates of the state? Would there be some sort of loss to us of funding, or would we include something? Because going back to last year's budget discussions, it seemed that that cut of that technology instruction and that particular instruction, and that particular line was very well supported in many, many ways, and it was said that it should not be rebuilt specifically that way. This is going back to last year's discussions, unless the technology program was improved in advance so that it was quality. So the specific question is, what is the effect on us? I know we have our funding mandates, and we know that we have requirements from the state. If we don't fill that position next year with that specific personnel person, is there a detriment to our district? That's the question.
No, I heard the question. Can I, can I just kind of, along with what Beth was saying, I mean, one point of it was, is there going to be any work done in terms of enhancing and creating a better technology curriculum than what was there two years ago?
Yes. So there would be no way that we would put that position back without clearly establishing goals, expectations, and a defined curriculum. It has been a missing piece, we know that from the conversation last year, and for a variety of reasons, but not going to get into those reasons, there's no question that as a result of Common Core, there's a piece that we would build in, but we need to build a strong program that somebody can implement and that ultimately supports our K-5 program and our expectations within the curriculum as well as within some of the mandates and expectations.
But this is the question I want to know, is what would the detriment to the district be if there's a delay of one year until the program was created and the best possible staff person was filling it?
Well, I guess the one, I'm just going to go to the new mandates, because I fear, I think that's my greatest concern. So in 1415, year 2014-15, the new, what they're called the PARC assessments are coming out, and our students will be required to take the PARC assessments. Right now, New York State has indicated very clearly, and we are in the process of assessing our technology available, but they have made it clear that our students will be taking the new state assessments, the PARC assessments, on the computer. One of the mandates, one of the standards in the Common Core Standard 6 is about the production of writing. Now, that is the production of writing across the curriculum, but they have made it clear that there is an expectation that our students are proficient. And so for me, I guess right now with so many unknowns, that's a little scary to me that New York State is saying that, and they've put down a lot of mandates, rapturinably, and just expected us to do them. So that is what they are saying so far. Everything they said they were going to do, they've done. So I feel like I would be remiss, if I didn't say to you that we should be preparing for that, I would not be sharing my true opinion based on everything that I know right now.
So what would happen if in 2013, 2013, 14 budget were preparing for curriculum to be appropriated with the testings in 2014-15? And what grade does that testing begin at?
Now, there's also talk of testing starting at the earlier grades. As of right now, we don't know what that's going to look like, but clearly, third grade is the beginning of New York State testing.
But the fact that 100K position was to fill K to 5 instruction with technology, right? So if you did it from three to five, you would be able to perhaps find to make better, and then say K to three, you're following yield, and you have a better idea of what's going on. That's just my suggestion.
Anyone else have a comment or question? Sorry.
Bob Brandt, from Oat Point. I agree completely with Mr. Grados' proposal for establishing a new foundation this year for going forward, and yet I would commend you all that to make that politically allowable to the majority as this question proposes, I think you mean to make clear what reducing to the 2% cap would entail. Instead of arguing for an abstract notion of educational quality, I think we could put faces on specific teachers on what a $1 million, $1 million cut would entail. But we can't put faces on them.
I think positions, I think you said we could figure it out. The number 20 positions, was that you...
Yeah, I think we should, I mean, I get it. I understand in a way, and we've talked about it the most ourselves, that you're sort of suggesting that we need to scare the community and to say, if you don't go over the tax cap, here's what's going to get cut, so you better get out of the boat, you better get your neighbors out of the boat, and, you know. So I get it, and if the majority of people over the next few weeks feel, we start hearing that that's going to be helpful, but I don't want to scare the community. Okay, I want them to understand why we're doing what we're doing. I want them to understand why we're proposing the budget we're proposing, that it's a sound budget. I'd hate to come out and say, well, we're going to need to cut French and modified sports and, you know, the whole list, portions of the list you gave us in... sports and, you know, the whole list, portions of the list you gave us in the first, the first presentation as to things that we can cut that are not state mandate. I mean, we sort of know what those things are. I don't, does the board feel that going to?
If I may say something, the, I understand the value, I understand the illustration. I just want, and I'm willing to do what the board is interested in me doing, but there's an impact to that and on the human side of things that I need to be mindful of. We're in a position where everybody knows how fragile their jobs are and people that are, have less seniority recognize that they may be vulnerable. But if we establish a target and a benchmark that we want to head towards with the budget and we go beyond that and we go for the wow factor and shock and awe, think about what you're doing for the individuals involved and think about how distracted teachers may be. Think about those teachers that you value. If we don't get to that point, they're going to start looking at the job market. Think about the relationship between those teachers and their kids. Think about the emotional aspect for your children as well, thinking about those teachers, those people that they love, that they see on a daily basis that they're worried about not being there. So I'm all for getting up and campaigning and I'll spend whatever time necessary to educate and market what we think is the most valuable budget. But I just want to caution all of us that I don't want to put people and their, I don't want to say their emotions, but to send people on a roller coaster for the purpose of trying to sell a budget. These people were saying that because we think we're going to get them out to vote, but heaven forbid, for the same reason, we're saying that we want to put them on that list because people will come out to vote, we owe it to those people not to put them on that roller coaster. I say that not meaning to be critical. I just want us to be reflective and be considerate of what we're doing and recognizing that that exercise, whether it may be successful or not, will have an impact on your classroom instruction and the quality experience that your children will have today all the way until May 21st. So I say that as a cautionary tale.
Just, Dan, just to weigh in on exactly this discussion, I think that perhaps Mr. Brandt would have misunderstood in the sense, I don't think he was trying to set up a scare tactic. I think he really would like here, or at least I would like here, to make a very clear statement to the community as soon as possible that the 2% cut, if you've looked at it, if working to the 2% cap, you've looked at it and it's absolutely unacceptable, it's not earned. That's the case you have to make. Rather than being specific about who's being cut.
I mean, I think from a marketing perspective, they're really to accomplish the goal without actually going through the line by an exercise. I mean, everybody has the budget and clearly highlight the number you need to get to that 2% and then everyone can come to their own determinations about what's left and how painful that would be. I mean, I'm agreeing, but I'm saying maybe there's a marketing way to drive home the point without actually having to go through and arbitrarily select things that really, I think none of us had any interest in cutting at all. So we'll maybe take a look at that and see if we could come up with a way to, to drive that point home to people without literally going through the.
And I think you're absolutely right and I think to Dan's point, to John's point as well, people need to get more involved here. And, you know, we spend our lives dealing with these issues. Most people in the community don't. It's good to see new faces here, but generally, you know, not, you know, we're, the thousands of people that this is going to affect are obviously not in this room and I'm sure they're not watching the videotape either. It's good to see that we have press covering this. I think this is one way that the word's going to get out. I hope that the press reaches out to us to provide this information so that people can see and see the numbers and see what we're looking at. But it's going to be a communications, that's the word I want to fill in, communication. It's going to be a push, it's going to be a challenge for me. Nobody wants a 4% tax increase. Nobody wants a school system to be on, below what they want.
Sure. Can I just?
Sure.
Ray is not going to like what I'm about to say, but a 4% tax increase is nothing. All right? If you look at the math of it, if the average home is paying $25,000 a year in taxes, a 4% increase is what? $800, $700? Uncle Sam picks up half the cost of that with tax deductions. So we're talking about having a $400 net increase on your taxes to have virtually everything we talked about. $400 is what you spend on your kids on a ski weekend. All right? So what I, what I don't understand is, why are we worrying about this? We should be saying to the community, this is what we need. I would like to have the numbers from Rayna's proving to the community, we are having our teachers work flat out for our kids. All right? We don't have the ability to get any more work out. Our classes are filled to capacity. We have no rooms in the classrooms and we have people moving into our town. We have people buying new homes. That's why, ladies and gentlemen, your taxes went from possibly 5% down to 4% because there are new homes being bought here because people want to live here. So my feeling is present a, this is what we should do. And the, and then we work at getting the 60% out to vote. And then unfortunately, if we lose, we got to go to Plan B, which, which will be, you know, a little bit of Russian roulette. But I don't, I don't think we're supposed to cut, well, let's cut out 100,000. I mean, I do, don't believe we have plus hundreds. I think that's, that's crazy. But we can get a couple of hundred thousand dollars out just because it might not be the greatest thing. I don't think we present, let's cut a million dollars. And honestly, I don't know if you would want to say it's going to be this social studies teacher and that French teacher. I just think if you say, we're going to expand from 19 headcount in a classroom on average to 23, oh, well, as soon as a family hears that, they're going to say, I don't want that. All right? I don't think we have to turn around and get specific. I think that would be cruel. All right? So I'm not in favor of getting people overwhelmed. Let's say to the community, this is the best budget we have, please come out to vote. We have to get a 60% and force the community to get off their duffs and go home. It's just that simple.
I want to finish up.
I'm sorry, I was ranting just a little.
I enjoyed it. Ma'am.
Floyd Gold, Tax Center. I just, I feel like I have to represent part of the crowd with four of us members because I've been hearing a lot about bus monitors as they throw away life and I realized it would be a, a big plus in terms of, it's a nice big number. But as someone with three kids, who sends them on the bus, including especially these kids, to me, I feel safe knowing that there's an issue that hides in the news. And especially as a school district who just hosted the movie Bulling, I think you've got to take a close look at what the impact would be by not having bus monitors.
And if I can answer that, because it's not, and, and this has been an issue that we've been looking at for a couple of years, and that's not saying that the correct conclusion is to can the bus monitors, but we have. And the initial reaction when it was proposed by the Budget Task Force is this is something that's been in Irvington for a while. It was because there was a tragedy in Irvington that these bus monitors were put there in the first place and we weren't going to take lightly taking something away that people value. I have three young kids as well. They all take the buses. I get it. Phil, Phil's kids are similar to me. We all have young kids. We did the diligence to look at other districts around us who have had monitors and have taken them away. We're the only district where they have the monitors anymore and we've reached out to those districts to see, have the incidence of either injuries to kids or traffic incidents or bullying, issues like that, have they increased when you take away the monitors? And you folks can discuss, I've been part of those conversations, but to the district, they have not increased. And so that's really what has changed my mind on the topic, that I'm not saying it'll be an easy transition. I'm not saying it's a throwaway item because we videotaped this very seriously, looking back to why they were instituted in the first place. Nobody wants to say anything like that ever happen again here to anybody's kids. But other districts have had a neutral effect from taking away the bus monitors and that's the only reason why we're concerned. So I just wanted you to have that background.
And just the last one of what you said is it's under consideration and.
It's, yeah, it's not, it's not done deal.
We as a board have not said yes or no. I mean, I just think it's something that Bob's saying, you know, look, get a new grant with us. Let's think about this. And I think that, you know, kind of the conversation we're having tonight, but thanks.
I don't want to cut you off, so I'm sorry.
Well, I just, one of the things I'm curious is, one of the, have you looked at the increase in people thriving? Or is this all to result of under-stopping on bus or increase in traffic?
Well, it's interesting. We have a, we looked at, yes, we looked at that in connection with our, our buses in general, looking at the radius. We're an interesting district in that a lot of parents only use one side of the bus system. If, depending on where you are, for instance, I live on Council Road. My kids in the morning are one of the first to be picked up. So that means even though they can walk to Dallas Lane, in six minutes, they're on the bus for about 34 minutes. So my wife and a few of the other mothers around that area decide that a half an hour in the morning is a lot of time that they need. So what they do is they carpool in the morning, take all the kids in the area, drop them off. But conversely, at the end of the day, we're the first stop getting off. So all the kids take the buses home. This is not a strange phenomenon in Irvington, but we still, even though, we look, even, we went so far as to look into this, there'll be more information if you want to know. If, if we could eliminate half of the bus route, if we only need three buses in the morning, we need six in the afternoon, can we do that? Understand why you can't do that. You've got to provide busing on both sides regardless of the actual, you have to assume that the kids are going to take the bus. So we have looked into that. Sorry.
Do I just add?
Unless you want, unless you don't want to. Yeah, we hear you.
Okay. Ask your center. Last year, it was Allison Gilbert on behalf of the Budget Task Force made a presentation to the board about busing. And I don't remember all the details, but I do remember that there were several ideas, some of which we're talking about now, some of which we haven't. So I guess one of my questions is, are you going to relook at that work that she did in terms of reevaluating the potential for save, cost savings in busing?
The answer is we have and continue to.
Okay.
The big difference of the panoply of things that were suggested.
Uh huh, okay.
You could break them down into two things.
Okay.
One, issues that we, things we can cut that don't require a vote for the public and things that require a vote of the public.
Right. So she was looking at, for example, I think rerouting some of the buses. I was at a psych committee meeting at the high school last month where one of the parent members was talking about, it was Judy Markowitz, she was saying she had sat down with Doug Carter. Should we look at routes?
There was one other thing that she suggested that did not require a vote and that was cutting one bus.
Right. Anyway, we don't need to get into the details right now. All I'm saying is I am, I would hope that as you are preparing your budget, that she put a lot of work into that. I think.
We're all, we're all absolutely digested in.
Okay, next, okay, next topic. I, I, there's some things I don't understand about tax surcharge I'd like to understand. I think if I recall, Dr. Harrison said that we're looking at something like 700,000 to 3 million potential financial burden for tax surfs over the next several years. Am I correct? And that that you, if you're putting in $700,000 to begin to cover that. So I know that this has been controversial in years past because we have not had a separate budget line. We haven't, we haven't really saved, we haven't had a budget line to pay our tax surfs. So then I think also, is that number, the 700,000 to 3 million, is that like, is that like the retail number or is that the negotiating?
That's, that's really, those are, as I said, that's, that's, those are, that's real math and tax surf settlements that are in the process of being resolved. So it's, it's real math and real exposure, financial obligation that we have up through next year, already in the book.
The 3 million, that is a real number. Okay.
3 million plus.
3 million, because I know oftentimes the tax surfs will be at a very high number and then again reduced, but this is the real number.
We're at over 20 million out there.
Yeah, that's what I, okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to understand.
And the 700,000 is a bond anticipation note. Is it? It's a bond anticipation note to cover, to cover that, which we would pay over multiple years.
Okay. So, so moving forward, because it looks like maybe we didn't do this very well before and also the economy created many more tax surfs in the last several years. So is, we have a plan for moving forward?
Well, I want to, I mean, I'm, I'm a real estate attorney, so I can speak to it a little bit more. I don't think people understand generally how tax surfs work.
Right.
And I'm not, I mean, I'm happy to talk to anybody afterwards and tell you exactly how. But remember, these are your neighbors who have paid taxes.
Yes.
Even though they're commercial properties, but residential properties can appeal their taxes as well.
Right, of course.
Who are deciding to, to challenge. And the way most of these things work out, it's a negotiated settlement.
Right.
Because neither side wants to spend the legal fees of actually going through the functional equivalent of the truck.
Right.
Okay? The, there was nothing that the district could have done.
No, I know.
Well, but you, you mentioned that somehow we didn't handle the tax surfs that.
No, no, I meant in terms of saving money in order.
Well, because you, well, the problem is, is how do you save money for something that you don't know is going to occur?
You got to take it away from something else.
Right. You know, their, their previous board members wanted to reserve the 20 million dollars.
That's what I remember. They wanted to reserve, that's what it was.
Which, which was, but at that point, you're spending your tax, the money that you have earmarked for classrooms and teachers and all that to put into reserve that you don't need.
Right.
You don't know what you're going to have. Here what we have, and the reason that we're taking this action now, is that with, and it's one corridor of commercial properties.
Right.
You know, and it's, we've had one tax, one company that owns a lot of those properties that is using this for tax cert. And just since everybody re-watches this stuff, I used to represent that company. I don't anymore, so I don't talk about it. But not with tax cert. But these, these now, the 20 million dollars in claims that we're making have been reduced through negotiation to a number that's certain. And so now we're at the point that we have a liquidated number. We know we're going to get hit for 3 million.
Okay.
And we're doing what we feel is the most prudent.
So that makes sense. And then do you feel like because the economy is beginning to turn a little bit, that maybe this, this is kind of the worst of it? Or we just don't have a set of what kind of.
The answer is absolutely true.
That's our.
It's, it's, yeah, I think that's right.
We think that you're going to see the same types of impacts eventually on pension increases. Right? The reason for the increases, you would assume that the system is underfunded, the, you know, the, the cap situation didn't help, maybe only compounded that Tier Six didn't provide relief to us and so on. So there's speculation that sustaining to help the economy is going to reduce the number of tax surfs that we're going to have to deal with. But also at the same time, eventually, there's a lag, eventually bring down our increases towards pension.
Right. And then we have, we do have some new construction going on, particularly in the Tarrytown Park delivery to school district, which if the real estate developers believe, to be believed, will give you a lot of money.
Well, but that's, you see, that's another, I mean, again, this is getting to be too much of a conversation.
It lowers everyone's rate.
It lowers your rate, doesn't have additional tax dollars.
Right, right. But it, but it could help.
It could help the individual taxpayer, but ultimately increases the burden on the school district because increased bodies in the classroom, we, you're going to have class size issues potentially in areas where we're on the bubble now.
Well, for instance, we have to add in a section of kindergarten.
Yeah, or the increased opportunity for additional special education services.
Right. Unless they send their kids to private.
So on the homeowner's standpoint, tax rate goes down or doesn't increase at the same rate as it would have. But the, the realistic pressures on the school district are up.
Okay.
Though what sort?
And then lastly, it's probably very small potatoes, but something that I felt every year and just, I know Dr. Harrison has actually, for the first time, like, we've had somebody to address it, but I feel that there are real. address it, but I feel that there are real cost savings to be had in energy in the schools. And I know that you've brought a team in to help him get it, but I truly believe that even before we get their reports and we start to do something, even if we have to spend money to save it later on, there are things that we could be doing every day to be whittling down our electricity bill that we don't do, that are easy things to do. And I would like to encourage the board to reach out to, to Nikki Pottington, who is an Irvington resident, who, you know, is part of the Irvington Climate Protection Task Force, who knows a lot about energy savings. And, I mean, you know, even if we bring our bill down by $5,000 a year.
Oh, yeah, we get it, it's, yeah, it's absolutely, say, money.
We save it every year, and we just don't do it. And I just don't, to me, that's very low hanging fruit.
Yep.
Well, I'd like to speak to Chris, the fact is, Dr. Harrison, his prior district made that initiative.
Yes, I do remember that.
Something that impressed us when we interviewed him. We're going to hold him to it. He gets a pass on this year, but, you know, next year, we're going to be looking forward to some of those savings.
It's something that we're, that we're working on. We have to interview firms, and we're trying to arrange the right opportunities to bring the types of people into the district that we'd like to partner with. And things that wouldn't have a negative impact on the budget.
And also there are grants out there. There are many grants out there that are, that local school districts have taken advantage of. Dobbs Ferry is a good example of this, that, you know, they've, they've gotten money in order to, to reduce their.
You know, it's, but you're putting a grant for an interesting point. I think a few years ago, probably five years ago, we actually created a grant.
NYSERTA.
And it just wasn't really effective, it never really took off. But again, maybe it's time to revisit, or maybe there's someone in the community who has actual, you know, professional grant writing experience, because it was not only for energy, but there are a lot of grants out there that.
The grants for energy is different, they're incentives. So you've got to put money behind it, and we're well aware of that, and all of you we've talked to, we have that mapped out, and the monies we'd be available to. There's, NYSERTA was coming down as state incentives, Con Ed has their own incentives, there's federal incentives. We're, we're well aware of that piece. The conversation, maybe for another time, is that idea of what do we do to begin to pursue grants? That's a broader, very political discussion, because in poor economic times, a relatively affluent, high-achieving school district are not always those that are the recipients of grants, shall we say. Where the opportunities introduced for communities like ours is, let's say, we head down a technology initiative, and we know someone that, from Apple, that may want to partner with us to work on an initiative and underwrite expenses. That's where the opportunity is.
Right. And again, maybe a way to do it with people like community business.
Right. Those are good points. Is there anybody else in the, like to say anything? Okay, hearing none. Hannah, what's that? Well, I, I don't know, I think, I think we've had, had all of the conversation.
Had everybody spoken.
Well, I wasn't going to give you an opportunity.
I didn't speak last, and last week, this week, I will.
Okay.
If I may, if I may, I just want to say, I don't want to interrupt anything, but my administrative colleagues that are in the audience, please go home. I appreciate you being here. The parents in the audience want you at your best to support their kids' needs tomorrow. So thank you for being here tonight. I will relay what comes after 10 and 11 o'clock tonight. So I appreciate you being here, but I want you to be at your best, not just the, the world must be exhausted. So, thank you, sorry.
Mr. Whitt.
Everybody's leaving now that I'm. Forget about it. I should not say anything.
Try.
I was simply going to give you some direction, because that's what you asked me. I do not believe that it makes sense to go through the pain of trying to get to the tax cap and show those cuts. I believe that what we should do is simply lay out what another $500,000 would, how that would impact the district. I believe that's sufficient for, for a lot of different purposes. One is that it may actually turn up some additional savings, which we would actually elect to take. And it may also have the effect that this gentleman suggested, Mr. Crandall, Brandon, pardon me, that it would illustrate to the community just how painful a significant deductions would be. Because $500,000 is going to get you halfway to the 2% tax cap anyway. And I think that's just a much more realistic exercise. And that, for me, is sufficient. I do not believe that we should consider going under the tax cap, I think it's pointless this year. We said last year, when we worked hard to get under the tax cap, we said it multiple times, that we envisioned a point at which we would have to go over the tax cap. We didn't think it was going to be this year, because we didn't know how we were going to get hit with a 38% increase in the teacher retirement system, an 8% increase, or 7.5% increase in medical. But that time is now, and this is the reality. There's not much we can do about it, other than demonstrate to the community and to ourselves that we've made every effort possible to look under every rock to save money. And that's what I think the next $500,000 is worth. That's my prediction.
Because this is, this is, this is the art aspect of plugging. What, what number do we present to the community that we're going to get 60% of the people to say this to? So it becomes a perception type of thing. So I just did a quick numbers to get to under 4% and show a 395 increase, just like Esther was saying, is that retail? Yeah, this is a retailing thing, okay? And so about $560,000. So if you show, if we're trying to get people to say, okay, I can accept that number, a three-handle number is more palatable than a four-handle. And to get there, it's, you know, 400, 560,000 is the number we have here. Let's see what that kind of looks like. Away from that, I'm not interested in going below that, because it's not a lot of money.
Yeah, I, I, please, I could just say, I mean, just, not to shortchange anything, but I agree with both of you, I think, that showing an additional 500 grand will point to the community where the cuts are going to start to look a little bad. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's kind of, it kind of meets both goals. And it saves administration from time and effort going home the whole way. And then I think it's even better.
Well, I'm not going to agree.
Okay.
I would like to see.
Thank you for your comments.
Either way, I think this whole thing is arbitrary, whether you go with half a million or, I mean, I'm not interested in going to the 0%, that's for sure. I think if you go to the 2% and you build from there, I hear what you said, Dr. Harrison, about, you know, personnel and what, how that would look, and how that would make them feel. But not necessarily, these cuts wouldn't necessarily affect personnel. Giving an example, and this is not what I'm saying, for example, modified sports. You know, that's not academic, but it is, you know, a different kind of, a different kind of cut. I recognize that this is a huge undertaking, and it is a lot of work, but I feel like you have to start somewhere, and starting at, because the state gave us this little mandate that we have to adhere to, well, we don't have to adhere to, but since they gave us this 2%, and we do need a supermajority vote, I think if we start there and then build back in, after we see what those cuts are, if that's the route we choose to go, but I think that we have to, I don't know, I think we need to show what the 2% looks like. That's my feeling. You guys can disagree. That's all.
I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
From a number perspective, but to actually have someone sit there and move along my wanting to get out.
Wait, wait, could I, could I jump in here relative to what Maria's saying? Chris, when we said we'd like to see a calendar, you gave us three presentations, three options, and then they talked for 30 minutes. I was like, I don't believe this. I mean, it's like, you know, so I think what I would love to see is, spend two hours getting us down to a million, a million 95. Get, no, I don't think.
And I just came out of our, your.
Because guess what? All of us at this table here could get down 1,950,000 in about five minutes.
Well, I don't know.
I would like you to come and spend two hours, because you're expert at it, Chris. Excuse me, Dr. Harrison.
I wish I only created one calendar to present.
There's a lesson to it. And again, I, and I, I'm glad, Chris, I, I'm concerned in that, for instance, saying, I disagree that we should start from the 2% and build up. I think it's okay to show what a 2% budget may look like.
Yeah.
But I think that we necessar, because I don't think any of us are going to propose that. Any of us are going to propose.
What's the difference between that and I say?
So, well, the difference is, the difference is, is how you present, right? Because, let's face it, we all know where the cuts are going to come from, right? For an additional $1 million.
I honestly don't.
You don't?
No.
We have to go back, wait, we have to go back to the first presentation.
A share from our superintendent.
So I think we can accomplish this in a way that satisfies the discussion that's been had. That I think we can do a targeted approach where we will go find and fill another bucket. We will look for that next ballpark $500,000. And to know that, we weren't to say two hours, we put in dozens and dozens of hours into this, all the people that were in the room, and the three of us before you here. What I would like to say is that we'll go, we're going to go through that exercise, and we will satisfy the, I think, the concerns in putting together that discussion. But what we will do is go a step further and begin to identify, and think about that present, the presentation back in December, that one slide that was referenced a couple of times today, that talked about those types of things. We can put value on some of those things, and tell you what they would, what they would look like to get the next $500,000. We'll do so in a way that they're realistic estimates, and try to do so in a way that's balanced, that I'm going to, I'm going to be a little defensive and try to shield my colleagues, the teachers in this district, from some of that emotion and pain that we can't. But at the same time, acknowledge that we're going to have to have conversations with some people before the fifth floor, to know that we're going to put out some concepts that could have impacted. So I think we can do a balance. We'll do detailed, detailed approach, targeting that roughly $500,000 figure, it may hit Mr. McCam, the 560 figure, and maybe somewhere ballpark of it. And then we will map out some other projections of what the next steps would be if we decide to go further, if there's a desire to start to go further. This is the area that we will analyze and present. If you ask me to go through in one fell swoop, identify a million dollars, we could, we could do it, but it's going to be, we could very easily do it. There would be programs that, we wouldn't be planning for tomorrow, we wouldn't, we would really be impacting kids' education for many, many years to come.
So we have a plan?
Well, okay, so, does that mean you're going to show at least to the board a million-dollar cut? Because I, I'm the one with just what Maria was bringing up. I think you said, we'll, we'll show you what the 560 looks like.
Show you 560, and then, and then, I don't know how I want to say, a, a, a more generic plus of them. And, and again, look at categories, general categories.
That's, that's fine.
Like we did in December.
That's fine. Is that good?
So in other words, you would take this list and identify and put numbers to them and say, if you want us to go further, these are considerations, with, with numbers attached to it.
Yeah, and that, I would, you know, we're using that, that list as a reference point now, because I presented that in a hypothetical, right?
Right.
So I, we would go down that route, it may not be specifically that list, and some of those things may be on my list of the 500 that you get on the list as well. So.
Good.
I think what you want to avoid is, you know, getting 150 people out here concerned that something is getting cut, when in reality that's.
That's my major concern.
And that's what we want to avoid.
Right.
So I think however we can best accomplish all the goals and avoid that scenario is good.
I personally can't handle the French words.
Part of that, right. Part of that happened because in the past, it was a list of everything that could be cut, and no one ever knew where it was going. So, but we're not proposing that.
Yeah, we just have to be careful. I mean, you know, people don't come involved, they get something to take on.
Now, we're getting, maybe this is too much, but I think what's going to happen is, a lot of people don't pay attention, they're going to hear, well, all sports are being cut. They're not going to say, well, this is hypothetical to get us down to 2%. And next thing, everybody's going crazy in time, because they think we're actually cutting all sports, which we're not going to do. So that, that's the concern, right? That's, wait, just one second. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I know, I know, I was just letting her, I wanted to, like, have a second. Briefly.
Please.
It would seem that some combination of what everybody's trying to get, and what I think Robyn said about like PR, what I've been talking to people and trying to update friends on last week's meeting, just simply saying, okay, if we're trying to cut $2 million, somebody said last week that would equal 20 teachers. So just some general information about what it would mean is, you know, goes a long way in getting it, without having to itemize, you know, what department is it coming out of? Just the general message in a PR sense, look, we want to keep the budget, you know, we want to maintain the schools. If we cut, this is generally, very generally what happens. Just whatever we think is what sometimes concerns me, I can't, why it has to happen this way, is when you start to target, well, will the, you know, will the community accept 4%? Maybe it's up 4.5%?